Because you know, better than than lever.
Let's take a look at some modern day levers and how they're used. I am now joined by Brian Kerr and we are in the United Airlines Maintenance Hangar. You do a lot of high tech work in here, don't you?
Oh, we do a lot of work in here. On a nightly basis, we prepare our airplanes for departures in the morning, taking our passengers to wherever their destination may be.
And although it's high tech work, you've got a lot of simple machines in here. I see, for instance, this pulley up here on the ceiling. What do you do with this?
Well, absolutely. We use this crane mechanism that has a pulley attached to it. And what we do with that is we lift very heavy things.
What about levers? Do you use levers?
We use levers every single day. For example, we have this lever here, which is a torque wrench. Be very careful, it's very heavy.
Oh, it is heavy.
Yes.
So what do you do with this?
And we use this lever to torque very high torques on certain things. We have certain nuts and certain mechanisms on the airplane that we have to ensure that they're properly torqued. By torqued, I mean tightened so that they will not come off in flight.
And one person couldn't do with a small...
With this one here, sometimes we need two guys on it, you know, actually putting pressure on the lever. We also have here, which is another lever, which is pretty much, this is a personal lever.
Okay.
Does the same exact thing, however, one person can use this.
And I saw one other simple machine.
Well, we have another simple machine that we use every day in here. Wheels, pedals, and what we do, we use this for is to transport our technicians around and also to carry things so he does not, he or she does not have to carry them.
He's got his wheels and his, there he goes, off on his bike. Thank you so much for talking with us today, Brian.
You're very welcome.
We've moved from the mill to the education center where we are looking at some more simple machines.
Catherine, what are we looking at here?
We have two sets of pulleys. We have a movable pulley and a stationary pulley.
All right, so we've got a bag filled with some rocks down here. You look like you're a strong guy, so I want you to take our scale and pick that bag up and tell us what it, how much it weighs. Pick that up. All right, what do we got there? That's right about 10 pounds, isn't it? All right, put it down. Okay, now take your scale off and you hook that bag up for me. I'll take your scale. And hook the scale up here. And you're going to give this a pull now, okay? So you give that a pull and let's look and see what the readout says. That's just about 10 pounds, isn't it? So the same amount of force. Now Catherine, I thought pulleys were supposed to make our lives easier and that took the same amount of force to pick the bag up as it did using the pulley. What's going on?
So all we're doing here with the fixed pulley is changing the direction of the force. The pulley's staying in place and you're still pulling a 10-pound bag up.
And the same distance. All right, but over there, it's not going to take as much force, is it?
Correct. We have a longer distance. We're using four different pulleys. One of those is a movable pulley that's going with that load.
But let's see what happens when we add more pulleys.
Come around here, we'll take the scale. We're going to do the same thing that we did over there. What I want you to do is hook that onto the bag. And then you're going to lift that up. We've got about 10 pounds right there. Okay, put it down. Now. I'm going to take the same scale. Claire, come on over. All right, you did it with one arm again, and that is a lot less force to lift the same 10-pound bag.
What's going on?
So what we've done is we've distributed that force over a longer distance, which makes it easier to lift the same amount of weight.
Right now, the National Air and Space Museum is going through a lot of renovations and there are a lot of ups and downs involved with that, including some using pulleys.
Let's take a look at how we're using pulleys during renovation at the National Air and Space Museum.
Large airplanes and spacecraft need to be moved during the museum's renovation, as well as really heavy construction materials. Some of these objects weigh thousands of pounds. Many simple machines are used to accomplish this. Often, these simple machines are combined into complex machines to accomplish these enormous tasks. To raise and lower large objects, pulleys are used. A pulley itself is a wheel and axle that changes the direction of the force applied. With a pulley, pulling down makes something go up. An object called a load is on one end of the pulley and when enough force is applied to the other end, the load rises. Pulleys can also be combined to create a mechanical advantage, allowing you to amplify the effectiveness of the force you applied. For a pulley, this means pulling a longer distance but using less force. A crane is a complex machine that uses mechanics to carry heavier loads than humans can. It combines many simple machines like the wheel and axle and levers. A crane uses a wheel and axle to move loads rotationally. But one of the most noticeable are the pulley suspended from a projecting arm and used to move really heavy objects vertically as well. All of the artifacts come down and need to be moved out of the museum. Then they all have to go back in again when construction is finished. This is all possible because of the many hard workers and the simple machines they use every day.
You all did a great job learning about simple machines today. We got a chance to see how they're used here at the mill and how we still use them today at the National Air and Space Museum.
I have snacks. I have cornbread made with corn that was processed here at the mill.
This looks delicious.
Don't you start. We have some more work to do.
What?
That great big stone that mills the corn, right? We've got to put that away.
But that thing's enormous.
Don't worry about it. There are simple machines that are going to help us out. Come on.
All right. Thanks, guys. See ya.
Enjoy your cornbread.
Um, that, that's huge.
Simple machines.
Hey Marty, let's go, come on.
I got to close out the show, go. If you've enjoyed the show, we want you to follow us on Facebook and Twitter. And I've got a challenge for you. We want you to put your nose to the grindstone, look for simple machines in your home, in your classroom, and send them along to us. We'd love to see them. Thanks for watching.
I grew up in a poverty. Me as a black kid in Brazil, I felt like I was excluded. And then I started doing capoeira and then all of a sudden, places that I wasn't allowed to be part of, they invited me to be part of it. My name is Mauro Romaldo, known as Master Jamaica, and what I do is capoeira, this beautiful art form that was developed in Brazil by the Africans. Then I had the opportunity to come to the United States. When I first got here, it's very difficult to get connected to the community. One thing that was really good and continue being good for me is capoeira. Capoeira is all about love, is all about community. We fight for, make a better day. And I was like, you know what? I gotta spread this out to other people as well. Today, we have this beautiful program that involves kids, families, women, men, and this is the man. He's been training in capoeira with me since he was a little kid.
I was very scared that I wouldn't make friends, but now that's not really a problem for me. It mainly means just being accepted for who you are, your goals, admirations.
So according to how they stood them moving in a circle, that's how usually they get the nickname. So he was moving like a little lion. And then I was like, you know what? You're gonna be Leonzinho. That's your capoeira nickname. He was like, no, but I want to be Jamaica. And I was like, why? He was like, because I want to be a master in capoeira, you know? And I was like, you still can be a master in capoeira, but you don't have to be me. You can express who you are through this beautiful art form and you don't have to be somebody else.
I've learned a lot from him regarding capoeira and just life in general, how to keep things positive and not really let the negative affect you terribly. I don't just consider him a teacher, he's a friend.
I feel very welcome in Salt Lake City and I feel like I belong in this place because of moments like this. How powerful capoeira is to bring people with so many backgrounds together and makes us, we belong to the community.
All right, stand by. Five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the October 16th meeting, 2023, of the Long Meadow Select Board. This is Select Board Chair Tom LaCusa and I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Josh Levine.
Here.
Vaneth Hamavadi.
Here.
Mark Gold.
Here.
Dan Zwirko.
Here.
And staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Mike Barbier.
Here.
This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar is posted on the agenda. The town's website identifying, identifying how the public may join, and there's no chat or QA function. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along, using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand when we get to the comment section of the meeting and I will call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by dialing, by phone, dial star nine to raise your hands, star six to mute, unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comment. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone and computer when you're not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now. I guess no, okay. And we'll begin, but the pledges, allegiance, all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So we will start with some announcements. The 2023 Fall Special Town Meeting, the date is set for Tuesday, November 7th at 7:00 PM. Long Meadow High School Gymnasium as usual. And for information, please visit the town website, www-longmeadowma.gov/townmeeting. Please note that the warrant will be available on this page on October 23rd. The Long Meadow Community Preservation Committee seeks new projects. They've announced that they will be accepting applications for project recommendations utilizing the Community Preservation Act, CPA, funding. Applications are available in the town clerk's office or online at the town website, longmeadow.gov, longmeadowma.gov. Civic alerts. Applications are to be received in the town's clerk's office no later than Wednesday, November 8th, 2023, for consideration and approval at the Spring 2024 Annual Town Meeting. Long Meadow Fall 2023 Leaf Program will announce that they will provide bag side or curb side pickup of bagged leaves again this fall and the town has a P A Y T leaf bags and they will, pickups will be on Saturday, November 4th, Saturday, November 18th, Saturday, December 2nd, and the schedule is subject to change due to weather. Residents who are putting leaf bags out for collection are advised to take them to the curb by 7:00 AM on those Saturday mornings. Town of Long Meadow P A Y T leaf bags are available for purchase at the Long Meadow Bing Y. And for more information on the leaf program, please visit the town website. So the first one is going to be Saturday, November 4th, and a lot of leaves are down. The sugar maples are already let go, so. It's time for resident comments. Is there anyone in the audience or online that would care to? Mr. Shea, please. So name and address is standard.
Yeah, I remember the drill.
I know, I figured you did.
Tom Shea, 81 Green Meadow Drive. I'm here tonight to talk about Article 7 crosswalks. At 4:14 this afternoon, I received an email from the town manager regarding said article. She stated, after watching the last select board meeting, tonight I will be recommending that the select board refer this article to the Traffic Roads Advisory Group now that it's in existence. I strongly urge you to keep the article in the warrant as written. How can this be happening? The TRAG was approved September 5th after two to three arduous meetings and drafts, yet the October 2nd and October 16th warrant have the crosswalk article there. So six weeks after TRAG, we've included it in the town warrant. What changed in the last 14 days and what changed since last Friday? TRAG is unclear as written? Is it applicable to this? The DP Direct has authority over signs and we're talking about something simple. Two crosswalk signs at the existing pole locations, which are one-sided. I remind you, I started this in April. It's now October. Chief Stock at the last select board meeting stated, I like the idea of more signage visibility with two-sided sidewalks. I like more visibility at crosswalks. The mechanized crosswalks in town are all double-sided and the two, I'm sorry, and the new ones at Blueberry and the high school are two-sided. It's the state standard. It's what other towns have. I have three asks. Should the children, parents, and crosswalk guards suffer because of the town's faux pas in painting and erasing the stripes on Ellington? This is about the safety of the children, parents, and crosswalk guards. Second, are those of you, select board members with children and those with neighbors with children, do you want to delay this any further? If so, it's on you. The town has now taken this project over. It's on the warrant. Support it. As Chief Stock said at the last meeting, you cannot put a price on safety. You also cannot put a price on delaying this any further. It's been going on since April. If not, at a minimum, this project should be funded tonight. It will not happen until July or August if it's not funded tonight. If you want to fund it tonight and have it go through the TRAG process, if you want. I don't think it's applicable, but if you do not fund this tonight, it won't happen until July or August. I started this process in April. So, like I said, it's on the select board, the town manager, and DPW to get this done. You now own this project. Now, I call on parents and residents to call and email the town manager, the select board, and DPW head on this matter. Thank you. I will stay if you have any questions. It's appalling that it's gotten to this point. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have any other folks who wish to speak? For the resident comment?
No, actually, I don't think on the agenda. This is regarding the energy aggregation from Energy and Sustainability Committee. Because I haven't seen the agenda, I don't know where I am.
You had reached out to Andrea Jason, asked if she could attend.
Yes, asking her if she could.
She was not available and she replied that Manu Terrani from Energy and Sustainability was available.
Right, okay. And, and Mike, well, we, I guess we could do that as a resident comment. Yeah, that way you won't have to stay the whole meeting because we won't get to it till.
But I don't think then we can engage in a back and forth.
We can't get engaged for back and forth though.
I think maybe while we talk about the draft warrant.
That's what the plan was. And, and that'll be about an hour from now.
Because I'm a professor and I teach in Rhode Island, even though I live here tomorrow morning, I have to leave at 6:00 to get to my classes. So Mr. Gold told me sometimes your meetings goes for four hours until 11:00.
Yes, it's, we try to keep it a secret that we're here till 10 or 11. Now you let it out of the bag.
Actually, we knew Terrani, five Lexington Road, Long Meadow. I'm part of two committees of town and one of them Energy Sustainability. And as you know, DOER, Department of Energy Resources of Massachusetts, they have this program that the communities, they can get together and they can aggregate ordering the supply sources for energy and a lot of the non-fossil fuel energy. And I was talking to Andrea just before I came, I said, you know, I teach international business, the more competition, the better the consumers are, as we know that ever source is practically, it is a monopoly. So, but looking at, there is a huge document on DOER's site and talks about the communities. It's voluntary, the households, they join this aggregate and then they order their supply sources of energy themselves rather than getting it through ever source. And according to the research and data that DOER now has published, that is definitely to the benefit of the consumers. So we are requesting that in the, in the town hall meeting, the coming up, so this issue to be discussed and see if we can get a vote. And the fact is, we don't have to be only Long Meadow because it can be aggregate. For example, East Long Meadow, you know, the areas that are close to us, we can all order and that's voluntary. So every, any household that would like to join, they can join this aggregate.
Well, unfortunately, we can't ask you any questions. And there might be some questions when we get to that, when we go through the warrant articles. So if you can join us or you could even join us by Zoom if you go home and watch the meeting and, okay, well, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right. And any resident comments online?
I don't see any.
Okay. So now we have interviews and appointments and we have for a couple of folks here. My computer's a little slow here. So for the Council of Aging Board of Directors, Stephen Gelling, are you here? You have a seat, gives your name, address, and, you know, tells a little bit about your interest in being on the Council of Aging Board.
Okay, Stephen Gelling, 76 Longfellow Drive. Been a resident of town for 45 years. Was told about an opening on the board and by a friend of mine, Judy DuLong, who just became a member and that they were looking for more members. Been involved with the Adult Center through the Meals on Wheels program and have taken advantage of a number of the programs, pickleball, some of the different activities and lectures that are going on and been very happy with it and I'd like to get back involved in town activities. I was a member of the Capital Planning Board for a little over 10 years, chaired it for a couple of years. So it's time to get back involved.
Great, sounds like good experience. Any questions from the board?
I know, Steve, I'm gonna get some.
Yeah, well, you seem very qualified and thanks for your interest. So we'll let you know next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks for coming in. And we have for the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, Michaela Salazar. Start with your name and address and tell us a little bit about why you're interested in the committee.
My name's Machilia Salazar, 50 Edgewood Avenue. I am interviewing for the DEI Committee. My interests, I guess first and foremost, I am a resident here now going on six years. I am a parent. I'm raising a young son who is almost 10. And I want to make sure that I am doing whatever I can for him and for his friends and other young people in our community, that Long Meadow continues to be a place where all feel welcome. I've dedicated, you know, a better part of 20 years of my career working in the nonprofit sector, mostly if not all, all of it with nonprofit organizations that specifically serve youth and families. So I have lived experiences, I have seen a lot and, you know, I look forward to contributing whatever I can from the perspective of always raising curiosity, asking questions, understanding individual stories and starting, starting young. I think these days we're reminded every day that we, none of us can live in a bubble. Everywhere you look, everywhere you go, things are interrelated and I feel very strongly that DEI is the root of all the things that we want to teach our children as far as having a growth mindset and continuing to have strong families and strong communities. So that's why I'm here.
Okay. I just, one question on your application. You talk about the East of the River Chamber of Commerce and get invited to their event every year in Springfield and a lot of little boys and girls. And then Lark, is that the Long Meadow Lark group that you're a member of?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay. Any questions? Yes.
I have a question. I want to thank you for your interest in the DEI Committee. I think the DEI Committee, it's, this is a problem generally with DEI. It's, it's easy to see a problem, but it's hard to come up with concrete things, steps you can take to alleviating that. And I know that it's a brand new committee and there's, that's still a big part of, well, what can we do? And I just, I encourage you that if you have any concrete ideas, I hope you can hit the ground running and I know that it's, there's so much to do. And I hope you can, you can help the committee. I hope you have some big ideas because we're looking forward to hearing what comes out of there. So thank you.
Thank you. May I comment on that briefly?
Sure, we'll turn it into a question.
I, I'm ready to hit the ground running. In fact, what, now, three, four weeks ago, when we had our Fall Festival in town, I volunteered, there was a DEI booth that I believe I was the only sort of non-committee member that infiltrated and I volunteered to work our, work the committee's booth and not only stand there, but I proposed the idea of creating a trivia wheel. And so, you know, simple, simple things that engaged families with their children in something that was engaging, asking questions, getting, you know, getting young people to participate in learning new trivia facts about different cultures or different religions or lots of, lots of things. I'm a firm believer that there are so many ways that you can make a difference and sometimes the smallest and simplest acts are, you know, truly the things that can make a big difference or at least be the snowball to bigger and better things. So, you know, it was starting conversations, the DEI booth was... The DEI booth was very vibrant and in all the years that I have, I have been, I saw the most foot traffic coming to, between DEI, DEI Committee is brand new, I realize, but when we've had LARQ booths as well, it was always difficult to get people to even come near our booth to talk, to talk with us. But little ideas like that where we made it fun and engaging made a difference.
That's great, thank you.
And we set up a DEI Task Force about three years ago and they produced a sort of a plan for the town. And have you had a chance to look at that?
I haven't, I, I'm aware of it and I have asked about where I could get a copy of it.
Yeah.
So I'm very interested because I know that there was a lot of work put into that and that is a blueprint that the DEI Committee can really use as a launching point.
Be helpful as a new member to look at that. And what's the best way for?
I could email, I'll email it.
You'll email it?
It is online, it's on the website.
It's on the website too.
Oh, okay.
It's on the website.
I could not find it, but, okay.
We'll make a link and I'll just give you some ideas to build on what Josh was saying.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank, oh, Mark.
Thank you for applying. I'm trying to get a sense if you come to this request, request to join this committee because of a sense of something that's needed in the town or something that's lacking? Or is it just, as you indicated, a just general sense of wanting to broaden the, you know, the view of folks in town?
I really appreciate that question. I, I guess to answer that question, no. Besides that, I'm a firm believer that you have to live with intention. So I'm not, I'm not here because of any negative experiences that my family has necessarily experienced, but I also don't want to wait until something potentially negative occurs to then decide to do something. That answers.
Great, thank you, sure.
All right, and the other? Okay, so thank you, we'll let you know next meeting, all right?
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Have a wonderful night.
Stepping forward. And next we have an appointment. We have a resident for the Cultural Council, yep?
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Peter Thompson to the Cultural Council for a three-year term, expiring June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? All right. And we have a presentation, guest speaker Paul McNeil from the Close Community Presentation. And the mission of Close Committee is to collaboratively really initiate, coordinate and sustain prevention and intervention efforts to reduce and address youth substance abuse and the impact of substance abuse disorder in the town of Long Meadow. And so it's timely because, you know, there's been a steady increase in things like drinking since 1995. And so we need to have some folks fighting the good fight. So Paul, we'll look forward to your presentation.
Thanks, thanks for having me. I think I presented to some select board folks seven years ago or something, so it's been a while. But it's great to be back. We have some fresh data that came in, in the 2023 School Climate Survey in April of last school year. And I wanted to share the results with you all. I find them compelling and interesting and they're vital in us strategizing how to work on prevention efforts here for youth substance use prevention in Long Meadow. So yeah, my name is Paul McNeil. I'm the Program Director of the Coalition of Long Meadow Organizing Substance Education for the Community. I have my Master's in Public Health. This is, we're in year seven of 10 years of CDC funding. We get $125,000 a year from the CDC to work on youth drug prevention just for the town of Long Meadow. The Coalition is a program of the Long Meadow Public Schools. They're our fiscal agent, we're federally funded, coordinate community efforts for substance use prevention involving 12 sectors. And I'll get into those 12 sectors in a second. Our real goal is to build protective factors and reduce risk factors in the community. So really, our work is to change the environment that young people grow up in and make it a healthy environment for young people to grow up. The 12 sectors that we have to have engaged in our work in driving the strategies of our 12-month action plan are diverse in nature. We have youth leaders from the Students Together Against Negative Decisions Club at the high school. We have parent, parent leaders, business leaders. We have Brian Kazaska from the, from the Long Meadow Community Television Programming. He's, he's our media representative. We have school representation, law enforcement representation. It's Mike Turkowski from Long Meadow Police Department and their Drug Addiction Response Team. I could, I could go down each and every piece of this circle, but having 12 sectors engaged in our work is incredibly important in sustaining our prevention efforts because it's the entire community helping out and driving our prevention. I want to give a shout out to Shelley Warren. She's a licensed independent clinical social worker with the Long Meadow Public Schools. She's the LPS Substance Use Response Coordinator. And there's her email address, you can visit her website there, there's a QR code. She's an incredible partner in the school district. And a school district is very lucky to have a substance use response coordinator. And so she sort of, she, she champions the work within the schools and I try to really connect the work that's happening outside the schools in the town of Long Meadow. And we try to marry those two things. And I think you'll see the results are pretty, pretty impressive. I wanted to talk about 30-day use rates because that's our sort of snapshot of how student, student current substance use is. Then I'll talk a little bit about our social emotional data, a little bit about perception data, and then school connectedness will be the last thing I talk about. So just a reminder about data, data isn't truth, it's signal, data just is. So folks can massage data any which way. We traditionally stick to our 30-day current use rates every single year to give us a foundational understanding of where substance use is in the town of Long Meadow. And so data just is and we just stick with what we've been doing. People always ask, you know, how do you know if it's true? How do you know if it's honest? And we do have about five measures of tracking fidelity and honesty on our survey, but it's the same five ways of tracking that honesty and we stick with it every year. Just statistical significance, there's some populations in the town of Long Meadow that are so small that it's really hard to have a sufficient sample size. Just wanted to put this disclaimer out there before I shared data. So 30-day use rates, we've been tracking since 2016 alcohol use, binge drinking, cannabis and vaping nicotine. We, we have seen a 35% decrease since 2016 in current alcohol use or 30-day alcohol use. And that question is, have you had more than a sip of alcohol in the last 30 days? Binge drinking is three or more drinks in a sitting for a male, two or more drinks in a sitting for a female. And we've seen that decrease by 38% in the last seven years. And then cannabis, we've seen a 21% decrease. Vaping nicotine is a little deceiving. It looks like it's a 14% increase since 2016, but if we look at just 2021, vaping has decreased, or sorry, 2019, vaping has decreased by 72%. So vaping wasn't as much of an issue because it was barely on the scene in 2016. And then it was really on the scene a few years after that. And so 2019, the rate was significantly higher and we've seen a nice drop since 2019. So that, it's a little deceiving that it's up since 2016, but it's significantly down since 2019. Just a heads up about eighth grade vapors. The rate is about 2.7% in eighth graders that we surveyed last year. It's a 49% decrease from 2018 to 2023. So that's going in the right direction with eighth grade use as well. Prescription, prescription drug misuse and abuse. In 2013, we asked about opioid painkiller misuse and abuse, which was 10%. That's one out of 10 students reporting current or regular prescription opioid misuse or abuse, which is, one out of 10 is, is a really scary number from 2013. And then we saw it drop precipitously up to 2017. That's when we started getting funded with this Coalition. We started comprehensively assessing the student body at a rate of 90% or more of students completing the survey at that point. So we got a little bit more of a clearer picture. So then you see stimulants were on the rise, sedatives on the rise, opioids pretty low. And then we've been trending down, 2020 is when the COVID data came in. So it was very, very low, there was no social access to almost any substance. We had a rebound back up in 2022 and then back down to 2023, almost zero for all of them, which is very, very promising. We like to look at sort of the root cause of a lot of substance use. So when you use a substance at an earlier age, you're sort of wiring your brain for addiction to other substances. And so we looked at what's the earliest initiation of an addictive drug? And for this community, it really is vaping. And we looked at students who reported vaping at the high school level. What are their other risk factors that come out of that? So students who report vaping, significantly higher rates of cannabis use, three times more likely to have cannabis use regularly, more than five times more likely for regular alcohol use, more than two times more likely for regular depression, and 65% more likely to report anxiety, 10% less likely to report getting As and Bs, and about two times more likely to report suicidality in the last 12 months. So vaping as sort of a cross-tab litmus on, you know, students that are already doing a risky behavior like vaping, what are their other outcomes with, with their behaviors? And it's not great. So it's really important to decrease use as early as often, as early as possible and to maintain prevention as long as possible during the young people's development. The 2023 School Climate Survey around the social emotional data points depression, anxiety, suicidal ideation and self-harm. So they were all on the rise up until about 2021 and then anxiety started to decrease, which is promising. Depression is a little bit on the decrease. Self-harm is on the increase, which almost one out of five students last year reported 12-month self-harm. So some, some form of self-harm in the last 12 months, not, that's not great. And then suicidal ideation staying at 13% last year. This is a perception slide. So when we ask students, do your parents think it's wrong or not at all wrong or a little bit wrong for you to drink alcohol regularly? If you can look at the red, it's the regular drinkers. So regular drinkers basically have a higher incidence of reporting that their parents don't think it's wrong or, or a little bit wrong. Meaning it's really important that parents show their disapproval for, for drinking for young people and, and other substance use. When, we asked them about their social group, do your friends think it's wrong or a little bit wrong? Regular drinkers are much more likely to have friends that do not think it's wrong or a little bit wrong to drink. When we ask students directly, do you think it's risky or not risky? Regular drinkers much more likely to have reported no or slight risk to drinking alcohol. Meaning it's important for students to know that it's risky. It's important for students to hang out with students that don't think it's normal and healthy. And then really important to hear from parents that it's not a, not an acceptable behavior. And then this is, I think, one of the more promising slides of all of our data and it's school connectedness. So students reporting a connection with at least one adult in the school, in the school system that they're in, be it at the middle school or the high school. If you are reporting feeling connected, lower rates of depression, lower rates of stress and anxiety. Stress is not as much of a problem, stress is much more manageable. You report having mostly more As and Bs. You report less self-harm, less suicidality and less disordered eating. If you report not feeling connected to at least one adult in the school, then you have less healthy outcomes across the board. We, we know that mental health is a really significant issue across the nation and we wanted to address that locally by training as many professionals in the school district in identifying signs and symptoms of youth mental health need. And so there's the youth mental health first aid training and we were successfully able to train 55 paraprofessionals in late August this year to identify youth mental health needs and signs of, of risk and how to intervene. So that will grow that number year to year. If folks want to get involved, we have an outreach and marketing, an event planning subcommittee. We call it an, an action team, Youth Cannabis Use Prevention Action Team, Assessment and Evaluation Action Team, and Overdose Prevention and Recovery Action Team. We have a few events coming up in partnership with Long Meadow Police Department, Saturday, October 28th. We have a prescription drug takeback event from 10 to 1. Come on down for some donut, dipped donuts and leave your unwanted, unused or expired medications with us. We collected over 80 pounds in, in the spring. So bring, bring those pills down, get them out of your house. And then we have an event in November, November 16th. This is an event for parents and teens if they want to come. It's a screening of the film Screenagers Under the Influence, addressing vaping drugs and alcohol in the digital age. And there'll be a Q and A with a panel afterwards. At 6:30 before the event, there'll be a community resource event where folks can come and talk to anyone from Learn to Cope, the District Attorney's Office, and other community resources. Our next full Coalition meeting is Tuesday, December 19th, right here in this room. And it'll be on LCTV, it starts at 7:00 PM. Anyone is invited from the community of Long Meadow. We'd love to have folks participate. And, and they're usually working meetings, we usually get some stuff done while, while we're there, working toward prevention in Long Meadow. And that's it, that's all of our social media information if people want to follow us or just keep an eye on what we're up to. And you can, we have a little mobile phone number, people want to text us. And then we have an email address, info@closecommunity.org. But I'd love, any questions, I have a few minutes, I'd love to answer any.
Well, thanks, Paul.
Of course.
So I guess the first thing is, the approach you're, you're talking about is, is great because it, it can't be just one person in an office somewhere. They say, yeah, go, go talk to them if you have a substance abuse problem. And by engaging the faculty, when I was actually running for office, I was talking about how when young people get to have a relationship with their teacher, how it can change their lives. And this gentleman started tearing up and saying how he, they completely saved him, you know, his teachers. And I know teachers are busy, but they, they play an important role in directing people to your, your program. And so that's a, a really good thing. It's interesting that, you know, people didn't see drinking as, as risky, that sort of thing. The other thing is the vaping and anxiety, of course, you know, the three things that can, we naturally ingest that can increase our anxiety are nicotine, caffeine and sugar, you know. And so it was not surprising that you put nicotine and people's anxiety goes up. I don't know if other folks on the committee or the board have questions or comments. Mark Gold?
Paul, I just have questions. When, when was the 2023 survey conducted? When and where maybe? And also, when's the last time you reviewed this with the school committee?
School committee gets a presentation like this every year and then the.
Just once a year though?
Once a year, yeah, if they want to come more. And the good news is that we have control of all the data. So if anyone's interested in cross-tabulating like, all right, but what about students who identify as BIPOC or LGBTQAI+? What are their substance use rates? What are their social emotional? It's like we can cross-tab all of the data to give us more specific information that is helpful. April is when we do this, early April, late March is when we do the survey every single year. And we try to do it, we try to do it before April break because if we were to ask them right after a break, it can skew substance use rate, you know, reported substance use. So we try to do it just before April break. We like to do it pretty far after February break because all of our questions around regular substance use are 30-day windows. So we try to have a consistent block of time that we can compare year to year so we can have a nice trend to, to compare to. And that's in the health and wellness classes. Every student is asked to participate, any student can opt out, but very few students do. The high school, it's very regularly about 90% of the students complete the survey. Ninth through 12th, a lot of districts will do like eighth, 10th and 12th and they'll do it every other year. This district does seventh through 12th every year. So we have unbelievable amounts of data, which is really great when you're trying to pinpoint strategies to address prevention.
Yes, well, substance use as a way of creeping into every community.
It's insidious.
My son lived in a very remote village in Alaska and he said the drinking problems they had there were outrageous, you know, and they were just making their own alcohol. And so we are all going to be exposed to alcohol and drugs at some point in our life and usually it's those teenage years. And there's a difference between people who just experiment and then they, it doesn't become a major part of their life and then those who become, you know, regular users and, and progress, progressive on that continuum of, of becoming addicts. When you think about predictors of people who go one way or another between experimenting or, or regular users, what, what do you, what do you find?
Well, I mean, the, there's a bunch of risk and protective factors right in the school domain and family domain and environment. domain and family domain and the local environmental domain. So parents talking early and often is huge. A 16-year-old's most influential person in their life is still a parent, even though they'll say it's their friends, or they'll act like it's their friends. They will regularly not say, Mom or Dad, you're the most influential person in my life, you know, please influence me. But they still are the most influential, and that's just, you know, that's lots and lots of data is still suggesting that. So parents are really influential. So keep talking about substance use, keep talking about the impact of substance use, keep talking about family history. A lot of parents don't know or don't feel safe talking about, well, my uncle or my brother or my sister struggled with this, had this mental health issue. It's really important for teenagers to know, some kids can afford to have a drink, some kids can't because of their hereditary disposition. So it's really important to have active parents talking early and often about substance use, having clear rules, clear consequences without any judgment, and following up with care and love is really important. The word love is really significant, I think, in creating protective factors for young people. That's the school connectedness piece, where if a student feels like they can talk to a teacher for a couple of minutes about something that doesn't have to do with academics, it's an amazing protective factor to feel like they have someone in their corner that isn't necessarily a parent, isn't necessarily a coach, but can certainly be a coach. And then friends, spending time with friends that don't pressure you into doing unhealthy things or risky things. It's easier said than done, I think, but it's really, really wonderful to find a group of friends that practice sustainable, healthy ways of getting dopamine and serotonin and endorphin spiked. So, you know, cooking together, eating together, laughing together, playing together, and not necessarily introducing that external stimulant, like a substance or a sedative, as it were. So yeah, those are some major risk and protective factors for young people.
All right. Well, I didn't plan ahead to have you here tonight, but tonight we're having sort of, what I think is a very big vote, because, you know, a person who, or a, basically an entity in town that distributes alcohol wants to begin serving alcohol at 9:00 AM in the morning. And so, like you say, if you have friends that say, hey, you know, let's get a 9:00 AM drink, and so forth, just what would you think about if the town allowed people to start to serve alcohol at 9:00 AM versus 11:00 AM, 11:30?
I'm a really rough person to ask, as far as, you know, if I'm, I'm not going to be pro-business on that at all. You know, I'm a huge proponent of the harder you make it to access substances, the better it is for young people. And a lot of adults don't like to hear that, but I'm not really working for adults. I'm working for the betterment and the health of young people. So yeah, for example, we don't have a cannabis dispensary in Long Meadow, which is a huge protective factor for young people, because they, it's hard to access cannabis. They have to go to another town or a city to access that. The closer you bring it home, the easier it is to access any substance, you know, if it's alcohol or. And another thing is just parent exposure. If your parents are using regularly, say it's 9:00 AM on a golf course or whatever, that normalization is something that really rubs off on young people with their perception of harm, or perception of risk, or perception of favorability. The thing that we've seen with data, and this has been more interesting the last few years, where it's not as important to say, don't ever drink to your kid, as it is to just talk about the risks with your kid. It's not as important to never drink in front of your kid, as it is to talk about the risks of substance use and drinking, but it's the most important to talk early and often, and to exhibit really healthy behaviors with that substance yourself. So my fear around any town like Long Meadow is just the normalization of any substance. So if people are drinking early and often during the day, if they're drinking regularly at night, young people see that, and if, especially if they see anyone binge drinking, that's a major risk factor. So I'm not a huge proponent of drinking at 9:00 AM, but that's, you know, that's a public health perception. I think that there's a lot of laws that have been protecting young people for a long time from exposure to that sort of, you know, early use in a day, and they've been really, they've had really great outcomes. That being said, I mean, the price point of tobacco, the most significant thing that's decreased youth tobacco use was how expensive they made tobacco. So there's public health measures that can be put in place. One of them is how many hours during a day you can access a substance. The earlier you do it, usually the worse outcomes you'll have long-term.
Yeah, thank you. Well, because I mentioned this to a friend of mine, and he said, well, when he was a kid, when he caddied, you know, he'd be carrying around these bags with kids, they'd have like quarts of alcohol in there to drink, you know, so you're getting exposed to it, you know, that way also.
Well, I think things have changed too. So let's say that's the 70s or 80s. We know so much more about brain development now. So we know that young people should not be exposed to the normalization of substance use at early ages. The longer you can wait to expose young people to substance use, the better outcomes they'll have. But we didn't know all this brain science, basically, for youth development until the last 15 years, really. So a lot of people are talking about, oh, I smoked weed when I was a kid. There's all this like rite of passage talk. You know, when I was a kid, I smoked weed in the 70s. And that conversation's tricky too, because that cannabis was 2% THC versus the THC you get in a retail outlet is 20%. So it's virtually a different substance, but they're having, they think that we should be doing the same thing with our kids. And I don't think we should. It's way riskier to use cannabis in 2023 than, say, '73.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Paul, I can't thank you enough for coming in and the work you do to keep our community healthy.
Oh, it's my pleasure. I love the work. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Next, we have Time Bond that can be giving a presentation on the town's water asset management plan, which they're conducting in coordination with the Department of Public Works. And we have representatives from Time Bond, and we have Sean Van Dusen, our DPW director. If you could just introduce yourselves and...
Before I start, I did print out hard copies if you'd like. I'll pass them down. Otherwise, it'll be up on the screen for you and for those that are remotely. So hi, everybody. I'm Jennifer Gilbert from Time Bond. I'm joined with my coworker, Dave Partridge. And thank you to the board and to Sean to invite us to give you an update on the...
Sean, you can introduce yourselves.
Sean Van Dusen, Public Works Director.
Thank you. Okay.
Yes, thank you for having us. So we're just providing an update of our progress to date on the water main replacement study or asset management, another way to refer to it. So slide going here.
Well, this is timely after, what, a 28-inch water main burst in Springfield?
Yes, that was quite significant, for sure.
We have one right now.
We have, well, a break right now.
Yes, so very timely presentation, I would say. So just to provide a look at what we've done so far. So the town, on behalf of DPW, has started looking at a very holistic view of the town's infrastructure. So looking at the stormwater, roadway, public tree, inventory, streetlights, and sewer, all in the effort to inventory and progression through condition assessment of the utilities and infrastructure that's in the town. So the last piece that we're looking at, the sewer is still in progress, but water mains was the next bite to take off. So what we started with is we reviewed record information. The town has wonderful data. Just to let you know, I work with a lot of communities, and their streetcar data of the year install and size and material will be very helpful for our inventory and updating your system through our geographic information system, GIS. You have a very robust system that you're creating to create that inventory. And so we took an existing model that we had prepared and just updated it with more current information, or current past, I should say, record information of your system. The next part of our study was to prioritize replacements and prepare a budgetary cost estimate, and identify a Phase 1 that was priority area from DPW's influence, as well as looking at the prioritization. And last step would be in progress right now is a rate analysis. So... So one of the wonderful things about GIS is once you put the data, the attributes, into this visual way of representing the data, you can sort it by many different things. So if you weren't aware, there's 100, about 100 miles of water pipe within the community, and about 82% of it currently is asbestos and cast iron. So 82 miles, generally, that's older pipe and has more influence to breaks and could be even called crumbling in some circles. So 82% of your system are made of those. However, if you go to the next slide, about 30%...
A question. So the PVC, is that small sliver?
Yes. So the majority of new water main is ductile iron. So yeah, if you want to go back to the slide, so about 18% of your mains have been replaced to date, or been installed new as ductile iron, which would be the standard. Some communities do standardize on PVC, but typically that's for smaller, like under four-inch mains, like it doesn't have hydrants connected to it. So, but yeah, the standard is typically ductile iron for most communities. So then 30% or less are eight inches or smaller. So typically, in current design criteria, you would want at least eight inch. That would be to provide you sufficient fire flow capacity. So you're doing pretty good, only 30% is smaller than that, and the majority of the areas are kind of associated with smaller developments. However, it is something to be aware of for long-term. I know you're not planning huge development in the community, but being aware of some undersized mains, and maybe you're having some capacity issues. We don't have a water main capacity analysis in this study, but it's something in the future you could consider.
Can I just, my understanding is there are no four-inch mains left. Is that confirmed?
I believe there's a handful, very, very small amount. Yeah, so the four inch is .7, so it's, there's a very small amount. And again, typically, you'll see the four inches at like ends of streets. So maybe they built up the majority of a street, and then you have the last two houses, and they just put in a four inch for the last two houses, something similar to that. But it is isolated. It's very small.
That was the last major effort of water main, was get rid of four-inch water main.
Gotcha. Yeah, and we can definitely review with Sean and see if there's any that, because this is obviously, when you think of data, it's only as good as the input. So you just keep continually, it's a living, breathing thing. When you replace water main, when you find new information or review it, you can continually update. And again, that's what's great about the visual representation. And we've created a dashboard, I'll mention later, where you can like zoom into the area and maybe look at those four inches and you can dig into those. Then the next way you could look at this data, because that's kind of what we're doing, is just looking at the data in different ways, is about 50% are over 60 years old. Typical useful life for a water main project, if you were to ask like a pipe manufacturer, is about 80 to 100 years. They'd never say that on a piece of paper, because, you know, they won't warranty you a pipe for that long. But in reality, what do you usually see? You'll see it in the ground for 60, 80, 100 years. And that's not necessarily what you want to plan for. You want to have a replacement plan in place where you're continually looking at your water main, seeing where you have failures, things like that, and not necessarily always by age. So it's a big picture. Look at it.
Are those 40-year gaps, is that just for presentation purposes? Do you have better information?
Yes, we, yes. Again, like I said, your data was very good. Only 12% of it, we didn't have a date for. So we did either, if we knew the actual date to the nearest year, we put it in. If not, if we knew the decade, so that'll be more likely what you would see is to the nearest decade. And then again, for visualization purposes, yeah, because you couldn't imagine if I showed you this with all the individual here.
There's a big difference between 1920, 1960, for what you're saying.
Yes, yeah. And that's just with that idea of the, I got a note about that. So yeah, greater than 100 years, it's only 2% of your pipes. 60 to 100 years is 43%, and that's what that range represents. And again, with that idea of like over 60 years, starting to get to the end, or you're beyond useful life. Again, so that's the idea of the ranges.
Thanks.
Yep. And then as we started the conversation, water main breaks. So it's inconvenient. It creates emergency response and phone calls in the middle of the night for Sean, disruptions in service, potentially lower no pressure, depending on the size and whether you can isolate it. And the effect to a neighborhood can be great, again, depending on how you can isolate the break while you fix it. You could potentially have discolored water, and as you could see with the most recent very large water main disruption or break that happened, possible boil orders and notifications to multiple communities. So, and then costly repairs. Obviously, if you think about it, if you can plan a project and have an efficiency of a contractor doing hundreds of feet or thousands of feet at once, it's much more efficient than having to get a crew out there. You know, unfortunately, it's per diem, you know, times and materials, it's much more expensive.
What do those diamonds represent?
Those represent the water main breaks.
Since when? Over what period of time?
So Sean, those were less...
Yeah, not much. And we haven't been doing a great job keeping records and then giving them to the GIS, but we're getting better. That was mostly, I think, what Craig had written down.
Does this last five years or last five months?
I know that we've had since I started, probably 20.
But we don't know what the...
But I don't have the records of all those individual breaks on me.
Yeah, but it's certainly, we can look into it.
But I think Craig has them. I can get them over to you.
If we're going to do something like this, I would just like to think that maybe we color-code them. So we say anything this year, last year, and then within the last five years, or something like that.
Sure. So I don't think that, I think Craig did do some records, but I think that was something that's been lacking historically, which is one of the great things about having this on. So we can get together when we meet with Time Bond and say, what's happened in the last month? Well, we've had four breaks. And then give the notice of where the break was, what the condition of the pipe was, what caused it, and then input it into this data, so we have it.
Right. But I'm trying to compare this chart, this picture, with the previous picture, and it looks like some of those breaks are in the newer sections of town. And so that's why I think it's important to see that, because is there a correlation between the age of the water main and the number of breaks? And I can't tell, but from what this very cursory looks, saying, it doesn't, it looks like it's almost random water breaks.
So the reason it's a little bit complicated is because anything that was built with AC is a failed construction, sort of, it's a failed material. It's not going to use because it breaks. And any place where AC was put into somewhere wet, there's breaks, and constantly. So when you see breaks on pipe printed in 1970, most of the time, it's anything made of asbestos cement. Anything made of ductile is new. Anything cast iron, you're looking at 80 to 100 years old. So if it looks like it's random, there is a...
And it's new, but it's only this big in diameter on the inside.
With the cast?
No, the cast iron, yeah. It's good, but it's only this big in diameter.
I would say that sometimes it's just the era of pipe. So for example, cast iron, some cast iron is 80, 100 years old. But there are some periods of time where certain manufacturers, like in the early 50s, might have had a bad batch of pipe, bad manufacturing. So sometimes cities will have whole, you know, a three-year period where anything was installed in those three years, it's really bad pipe.
And obviously, look at the area close to the river. There's higher pressure there. So that combination along with material factors, if there's some of the reasons, there's more failure.
Next slide. So after updating the data and looking at it in GIS, the next step was to develop prioritization. There's multiple different ways and methods to do this with discussions with DPW. What we ended up doing is we developed a ranking system based on the age, material size, and number of breaks. And then from that, each pipe segment was assigned a number, and then we set up a range for each of the priorities. I didn't want to go in too much detail on this, because it's still in the works, and we're still building it and having the DPW review it. But this is just a quick glimpse at the dashboard. So with us and with DPW, we can review it and look into it a little bit more detailed. So for instance, just recently, it was Magnolia Circle, we just had two breaks, and right now, that's just ranked as high. However, we've got to dig a little and be like, okay, how can we adjust the prioritization so that we make sure that that ranks higher? And again, the idea of this is that it's a study that's going to be a living document, that we'll come up with an initial recommendation and then continually to update it as we get more data, information, and reviewing it.
Yeah, I think the big thing to remember with this, this is like a, the very beginning, a bird's eye view, sort of high level. And then as we move along, we can get more detailed and hopefully get better data generated and keep it moving and, you know, becoming better.
So Sean, just, we have a current leak, and, you know, according to this data, is it, what area is it in? Is it in...
The leak we have right now, it's on shaker on cast iron.
It's, okay. And is it, so it's a high-risk zone?
Anything cast is old.
Anything cast is a high risk?
The issue with Magnolia Circle is AC, so it's a little bit different. It's also a circle. So there's a little bit of water pressure change. It creates a higher probability of water hammer destroying pipe. But the big thing is that we've been going through a pavement process without doing the lines first. So the issue of Magnolia Circle, that entire road is now undermined, and we have $150,000 in damage on a little circle that was just paved. So not only do we need to go and fix the water main now, but we need to go pave it. So we've, the town's lost, you know, a significant amount of an asset.
Good. Thanks for bringing it to our attention.
And do the next slide. So then the next step was to do a budgetary cost analysis. There's a couple different factors that I think a lot of people are readily aware of, of the increased labor costs, escalating material costs, and decreased competition with contractors, because they're quite busy right now. But the idea with any type of cost estimate, especially when you're budgetary, is that you want it to be something that you can continually, I feel like a broken record would be updating. is that you want it to be something that you can continually, I feel like a broken record would be updating, and doing projects, the more projects that you do in a community, the more you can refine this. So as a starting point, we use several of our most recent water main projects that have been bid in other communities, as well as some information you guys had. So as a first step, we have assumed unit price that we're using and then applying it. So as you can see, it's a big nut to crack if you're gonna be replacing even just all the immediate water main, so. And just keep in mind, those are all present costs, so all those numbers are what it would cost right now. The raining pipe, you know, is going to continue aging, and prices are going to keep going up. And one of the ideas that you want to kind of keep in mind, too, with any type of cost projections or going forward is, you know, what is inflation going to look like? We've had historic inflation over the last few years. Is that what you would, would you really want to be using five, seven percent inflation with these kinds of projections? That's not reasonable, it's not helpful. Historically, you're around three to four percent is, if you were to look at the ENR, the Engineering News Records Cost Indices, that's historically what you'd see. So if you look in that graph on the bottom, if you were to assume a three percent inflation rate, and you're going to try to replace all the water main, it's like sixty million dollars over, or, not all the water main, but all the water main you could do in the, in forty-year period. And I'll go more into what that will actually achieve in the future. But if you, instead, we have five percent inflation over forty years, it's a hundred and forty million dollars, so it's a significant increase. So I just, I felt like this is a good representation of making sure that you understand that budgetary costs are not, shouldn't be taken literally. As you get more detailed in your design, and you choose a phased project, and you're actually designing it, you'll get more accurate estimates for an actual project. So again, this is big picture that we're doing. Then phasing, so you have, how do you do the projects? How many projects do you, how big are the projects? So one way that a community could do is be very myopic and just say, we're doing water main, and that's it. However, with meeting with DPW and from our understanding for the town is, really want to look at, yes, the immediate priorities for water main first, but also look at taking into account the historic water main breaks, the bigger picture, aging, deteriorated, undersized pipe, but then also coordinate with the other improvements, roadway, sewer, water, other improvements that are happening in the system, because you wouldn't want to pave, like, you know, Sean just described, you know, paving a road, and then, you know, know that the water main potentially could be an issue.
Jennifer, the point you brought up is an outstanding one here, and something that concerns me, because here's, here's my premise. You know, we may only be able to do the water mains we have to do, and not the water mains we want to do. Finances is a big deal, and it always is. And so the point you brought up here is coordinate with other improvements. Does that mean we're going to end up, and I'll use a perfect example, replacing the water mains on Route Five, because the state came along and said, we're finishing Route Five, when we really need to spend our money on Magnolia Circle and those streets? And we don't have enough money for both, and you can say we have enough money for both, but the fact is, we don't have enough money for both.
Correct.
And so how do we square your comment there, that there's a coordination, with the fact that that's not necessarily what your priorities are setting? Especially when you get to the coordination of, we're doing it because the state came in here and said they want to refinish Route Five. Who cares they want to refinish Route Five? That wasn't our priority.
But I think the danger is, what we did with Magnolia Circle, which is going and paving a road where we knew the water line was aging and should have been replaced, and then we put this money into this road, and now we've lost it. We've lost that money. So that, it's a point well-taken. I think the other thing that we need to consider is, if we're gonna go and pave a road where we know it's a failed water main, then we ought not do it in the most rigorous construction methodology. You don't want to put a twenty-year new road into a road where you know it's going to break apart. You do it as cheaply as possible. So, and that's a very hard balance, it's hard.
But Sean, you're assuming that we've got enough money to do both, and we do not.
I'm, I'm not, I don't assume anything about the money. I'm only saying that this is the need, and this is the data. I cannot make this decision for you guys.
So at what level do we make the decision of what we must do versus what we want to do? And what makes sense, again, for coordination, what makes sense to do, but frankly, we can't afford it? How do we make that decision, and where does that decision lie?
I think the decision lies ultimately with you. We're gonna, I'll be making recommendations for sure. But either way, these mains are gonna fall apart, and we don't have forever. So we're gonna be fixing them, and we're gonna get a debt-by-a-thousand cuts with the rest of the system when it falls apart. So these decisions are gonna be hard, and they're definitely generational decisions you guys have to make. But they have to be made, and we have to own whatever choices we do make.
Okay, I just think it's important for people to hear that, that we don't have enough money to do everything we should do, so we have to focus on what we must do.
Yeah, one thing that, if you don't mind, is by taking data, and then being able to make educated decisions. So by being able to see, like, one of the things that we're gonna do in the future that I've talked with Sean, is to have a way to overlay the, because one thing, again, GIS, you can overlay the data and see where are planned paving improvements, where are planned sewer improvements, and overlay them. And that way, you can have the data to feel like you're confident and that you're making a decision that's in the best interest for the community. It's not easy, I concur.
Speaking of data, in the last two months, we've heard, I don't know, presentations on another ten million dollars a year that we don't have. But for data, for considering something like this, do we have numbers for how much we have been spending on repairs? And how much, I know you can't project it, but if you say, like, X number are going to fail, do we have a number that we could guess on how, projecting how much we're gonna spend the next five years on repairs?
So we have some of the capital product history, and I can go through and give you what we spent, but it's been minimal compared to, if you assume a one percent replacement, we're nowhere near two or three million annually. We've been much, much less. We do have one, one and a half million dollar project now, but it's been substantially less. I'd say not enough. And it's a shame, because at that time, when the interest rates were low, that would have been a perfect time to do big projects and bond, so I, sorry.
So I guess I'm not, by repair, I don't mean replacement, I mean water main breaks. How much does that cost?
A lot. We have a lot of in-house, but we're not able to do that now with the existing staff. But, you know, fifty thousand dollars here, seventy thousand dollars there, it adds up.
I'd be curious to see what that number is, and if we can project that out.
Yep.
I know we're guessing, but if we could do that, I think that'd be a good number to have.
But when you're fixing a broken water main, you're not replacing that water main, you're only fixing that one spot, so that's still a setup.
You have to replace it, you have to fix it, right.
And so you're gonna pay the money to later replace it, too.
Yeah, so we're paying a lot of money to replace it, but we're saving that repair.
Right.
I mean, obviously, it's going to be a lot more to repair, but...
I want to pivot to the project and primers we did, which is related to Magnolia. And we took small sections where we were getting breaks and decided to repair those only while leaving the other sections. Those other sections now have to be replaced as well. So it's not, if those decisions are gonna be made, I'm not gonna make them. I need to have an open dialogue with you guys about what, what's gonna happen and why, because those are projects that shouldn't be run that way.
Yeah, this is the kind of, this is a huge decision, that's why we have...
And this is what, this is what this study's doing. We're trying to understand what's happening on a very broad scale, just so you can say, this is the magnitude of it. Right now, we talk about Phase One, you know, right now, the DPW has something in mind that they think that makes sense as a Phase One. But we're, but there's gonna be Phase Two through ten, fifteen, depending how big these phases are going forward, and how to afford that going forward, and it, probably in here, that it's eating an elephant. You gotta do it one bite at a time, so.
I do want to say one other thing, which is that Long Meadow's not unique in this situation at all. The entire country's facing infrastructure collapse.
We're all going down together. Big deal, we're all going down together.
No, but we're in a position now where I think we have a plan. We know where we can pay for preliminary engineering in front in the out years, so even if we choose not to do the project, we're ready if a grant comes from the federal government, or if we can get SRF funding, or if whatever other mechanism comes in place where we can get a low interest rate or partial or full funding of a project. But we'll have a plan.
Yes, it's, you know, we look at funds for improving the community. People don't really look under the ground and say, oh, let's give some money for those pipes.
Yes, most of our comments when you do projects, or you made the road black, it looks great. Why did you have to do all that other stuff, and it took two years? Like, you know, like, it's, well, because you don't want that to fall into the ground.
Josh, I have another question before you start moving on to the phase. I saw on here, the map, some of it, some of the pipe goes into Springfield, which brought to my mind, are we, if we, let's say, fast getting there, we do all this, we have a great water system, are we surrounded by crap that is going to be a problem for us? The water won't get to us? I mean, obviously, we had this last month.
We have two other projects. One that's underway was just the water tank analysis, to hopefully have some redundancy in the system should we go offline again. The other is an interconnection study with Enfield. So that's gonna take some time, too, but, so we'll have contingency should something like that happen again, which I don't think we've had historically.
Okay, so does Enfield have a good system that...
I, I can't get into details about that, because we haven't done the analysis.
Right, great.
Right now it is, but the research that we're doing and the plans that we're making are a much better connection than that.
Okay.
Good.
Okay.
Yeah, next phase, so I know that you're aware that Sean has another project that they have in the works, but at the time, we, as part of our study, we were calling it as a Phase One. And this was an area that got identified not only because of it being aged water, so all the red mains are highest priority, immediate replacement, and the majority of the area is AC and undersized six-inch cast iron. And what really kind of brought it more to their priority was that this area, I guess, was used to, was on the paving docket. And so, you know, to, again, with that idea of understanding that you can't do it all at once, but if you want to fully reconstruct the roads, that replacing water mains that are high priority would make sense as well. So this is, constitutes about two-point-four percent of the system, or two and a half miles of water main, with an estimated total construction cost, all in design, contingency, engineering, everything, of ten-point-four million dollars. So this is not been finalized, this is just the DPW's first attempt at saying, hey, we believe this is the area where we should go next. And here, let me flip to my notes, just give me one second. Yep, and so if you go to the next slide, to be able to fund that project, obviously, that one's in planning stage. You know, if DPW decides to go forward with the board's approval, it would include a full design and construction over multiple years. So your next question is, how do you pay for it? So our study also includes a rate analysis, it's in progress. So this is very preliminary approach that we've set forward and wanted to get your input on as a first glance at it. So again, we're doing the deep dive into the data as we speak, but preliminarily, right now, what we have is the CIP, or the Capital Improvement Schedule, under description is a Phase One water main replacement, is the ten-point-four million dollars. And then future water main replacements at four and a half per year, which would represent one percent of your system. And, you know, it's obviously, you can just look at this, it's a pretty large rate increase to be able to fund it, but I think the idea and what we really wanted to present to you is like the now, now's the time to start. It's only going to be more expensive, and Sean asked us to present on this. This is assuming a five percent bond rate, twenty-year term for paying it with a three percent inflation. Obviously, if you were able to get a much better bond rate, I think I've been hearing from another community recently, they were able to get three-point-five, so I'm hoping that bond rates are going down, and that was a similar water main replacement project. So twenty-year term, three percent inflation could potentially, over the next five years, this is what rates could look like.
I want to just interject, there's a different ten-million-dollar project.
Yes.
It's on, they're two different...
Two different ones, yes, I know it is. Yep, and then next slide. And then one of the things, talking with Sean, and we get this question a lot, is how do we compare? How does Long Meadow compare with other communities? And to be able to do an apples-to-apples comparison, we used an assumed average of sixty gallons per day, per person. Again, the reason why you want to have an assumed average that you apply to all of them is because depending on the community, depending, every average user for a community will be different, depending on usage. So if you click to the next, click Long Meadow, we've started looking at your data to date. It's on average more like a hundred gallons per day, per person. But I just wanted to make sure you understood that the graph was just assuming across the board sixty gallons per day. So Long Meadow is relatively on the select projects across the state, one of the lower. But then if you go to the next slide, again, the confusion with the ten million dollars, the project that Sean spoke of previously, but I'm showing it for Phase One, you know, that would be about a twenty-five-dollar increase per quarter. And again, we're in progress of doing a detailed rate analysis to confirm these numbers, but I wanted to, if you're talking about how do we go forward, it's important to talk about the money. I totally understand this, because that is a baseline thing. It's like, yes, we will, if money was nothing, we'd do all of the projects. But obviously, you have to make an educated decision on where you're putting money and what you get for that money that you're putting in. So that's just a glimpse, I didn't get, the more, more will come for that, and then the next.
That's only Phase One, you didn't add in Phase Two, Three, or Four?
Correct, right.
We'll be, we'll be off the top of the chart, and nobody who's on this board will be on this board anymore, if that happens, I guarantee that.
The, the other municipalities that are up there are facing similar issues. So although you would definitely be moving into the more average range, they're gonna be moving up, too. I mean, it's just, it's gonna happen, so it, yeah.
And those out years are not ten million, they're four-point-five?
Yes, yep, yeah, and I, without, you know, saying names, naming names, but through, one, two of those communities, I'm working on their capital improvements plan right now, and they're gonna be making rate changes as well in the near future. So they're in similar cases you are, where they're just doing their inventory, seeing what the problem is, and trying to figure out how do you move forward, and, yeah.
So Lynn, is it appropriate now to ask about infrastructure support from the state or the federal government, and what that looks like going forward? Because personally, I can't see the town of Long Meadow affording this. I really can't.
So, yes, Sean and I have been talking about this a lot. There are federal funding funds available. We've talked about how we're going to develop a strategy to go after those. But one other thing that we talk about a lot when we talk about this is, it's not a matter of whether we are gonna afford to do this or not. We're going, either way, we're going to be fixing the water system, whether it's breaks or a holistic repair or replacement. These costs of these projects are just gonna become greater and greater, and as the system ages, we're going to be faced with water main breaks more and more. So it's just, what strategy do we want to, to adopt?
The problem is, Lynn, we can't guarantee people that if we replace these water mains, our water main breakage rate will go down, because it may go down in that area, but we've got a hundred miles of repairs, so we're gonna fix two and a half miles and replace two and a half miles for ten million dollars. And we got seven, you know, ninety-seven and a half other miles that are still breaking. And so, you know, spending money on capital doesn't guarantee a reduction in the spending on, you know, on the other, on repairs. And frankly, by the time we finish all the replacements, we're gonna be back around again, because, and having to repair the ones that we fixed first. And so the question, that's why I go back to...
It's no different than a building, it's no different than a vehicle, you don't get forever out of it. You've got to pay to replace and maintain your system.
But the question is, you know, do we do it as a triage system? Spend the money on the things we must do, because even if we spend the money on the things we'd like to do and think we're planning about, we're not preempting our expenditures on the other areas. That's the problem. If you could say, spend ten million dollars here, and your repairs will go down, then it's got a justification, but we're saying, spend this because it'll prevent your repairs from going up in the future. But we don't know that it'll prevent your repairs from going down. That's a tough sell, when you're telling somebody, we're gonna take your water rates up seventy-five percent, or eighty percent, or a hundred percent.
I mean, ultimately, it is your guys' decision, but I think it's gone too long to get to this point where we haven't been putting moderate amounts of money in when the money was, went further. So the longer we wait, the worse it gets, and it's like a negative feedback loop, where we'll be fixing repairs at a faster and faster rate and spending money to replace the lines. So that money that was going into repairs would, I believe, go into replacement, and would guarantee that we're not also fixing roads that are blown out from the water mains. So we're, we're hitting the water main repairs, not getting new infrastructure, and paying for the road to be repaired, and not getting the new line.
There was one slide that showed the years of the repairs. And if you notice on it, at least from what it looked like from here, from twenty, from two thousand to twenty-twenty-one, I think it was, there's, that twenty-year window of time seemed to have the least amount of work happen.
Yep.
The, the other thing I do want to add on is, the environmental effects of, like, the rain we've had this year actually exacerbate repairs. A lot of water causing sand to move around causes the AC to collapse. And deep, deep frost, when you get it, you can have a... And deep, deep frost, when you get it, you can have a really bad, bad winter. A few years back here, I think they had 30 or 40 breaks in like a month and a half because we had super deep frost. So the only way to, to get in front of that is to build new and to build more robust to deal with the impacts of severe weather events and frost and rain. And we're just very vulnerable right now, including if we have fires. If you have the area, we just had that break, water hammer can be created during a, during a fire, and we would not have the ability to fight a fire. So it's just, all that needs to be considered. And I know this is big stuff, but.
Okay. I just want to follow up on David's comment about how when you have a break, you fix the main, but you don't replace the pipe. Are there any communities that sort of use that as an approach where they say, once, once it breaks, then we're going to replace the whole street?
Well, when there's a break, there's an immediate need to just fix the break. So they're just trying to get the system back up and running. There's no approach that I can think of that they're going to say, well, let's just keep on laying pipe down the street. And it's very, going to be very inefficient to do that, even if you, whether you have the ability to do it and if you choose to do it. So what I'm saying is like when there's a break, all you're doing is fixing it, fixing that one 50-foot section perhaps.
Right.
And, and you still have the whole street, which is still in remnants. So, so going back to Lynn's comment about the, that one with the age, I mean, in a way, you have nice math to work with so you could keep it tracked. So there's 100 miles of pipe. And what you were saying, in the last 20 years, the city only replaced 7% of its line. If, if the, if pipes were to last 100 years, and that's, no one will guarantee you will pipe the last 100 years. But based on that, you should be replacing 20% of your system every 20 years, right? And you said, and there's only 7%. So that's pretty much saying you're falling behind. That's with very resilient pipe, 100-year pipe. And all your pipe is not going to last 100 years. I mean, some of it is last, what happens is when pipe is 80 or 90 years old, though, every year it gets older, there's a higher risk that it's going to break. And that's what's likely to happen with many of your older pipes that are 70, 80 years old.
It just gets brittle.
Yeah. But I would think, you know, based on Sean's comments, that, you know, like water saturation or deep freeze, certain areas might be more vulnerable. And so that might be a good place to focus replacement because you say, this is it. I mean, we, we know that we have areas where there's a lot of clay, there's a lot, there's a lot of sand.
It's represented with the extra breaks that we have.
Uh huh.
That map, which we'll be making much more detail now that we have this.
So I'm just getting back to the, of how to choose, I mean, it was early on in Jen's presentation. I mean, we look at age of the pipe, the older it is, the more likely, you know, without anything else, the older it is, the more likely it's going to fail. Certain materials, just asbestos cement, we've been calling AC pipe, that has a high probability, especially if it's in the conditions that Sean's talking about. Pipes that are in dry, sandy areas don't have a lot of problem. But once there's clay or there's varying water tables, it tends to get spunky and will tend to fail. So we're looking at age, we're looking at pipe, pipe materials. We're looking, the size criteria comes in is just, you know, if there's, what happens with pipe also is cast iron pipe has a, I think, gets through.
Tuberculosis.
Tuberculosis. Where the chemicals within the water just start to form, like tuberculosis in your lungs, it takes up the capacity of the pipe and that affects water quality and affects capacity. So even though that, that's not directly related to breaks or failure, it does have an effect on your water quality. It does, so we're looking at all these things together to figure, to come up with a priority rating. And then the biggest thing on top of it is Sean's break data. Because if, if a street or a neighborhood has 10 times more breaks than the neighbor beside it, that, that's indicative that something's, something's going on there.
Yeah.
Could be the, the things that he was talking about with, with the, the.
Yeah, soil.
Soil and groundwater. Or it could be there's a bad vintage pipe there. But that's why those rank up higher and that's, that's.
And just by the nature of doing a repair, the restraint, so the actual like way that a water main works, it's under pressure. So there's always pressure pushing out of the pipe. And if you have an event on a certain stretch of a pipe, like has water hammer and there's a ripple of an increased abrupt pressure change, and if you've already had it once before, it, think of it as that there was a pipe that was already a little bit susceptible to breaks, and then you had a water hammer event. So then it made it so that it, any little cracks or little things that may be in the pipe already exasperated. And that's why, in particular, that neighbor, I think, I think that's why you've seen historically over the last few years, multiple in the same neighborhood.
Emerson, we've had the same break in the same spot. One, I think this last winter was like three breaks in a month in the same spot. We had it again three weeks ago, four weeks ago, the same exact spot, right in front of the, the older person's home there. And we are, that is, there's a contract and award to replace that line, but we've, I don't know, six, seven repairs there in a year. It's, it's, it's failed, you know?
Yeah. All right. Well, this is a lot of information.
Yeah, just one last slide, just as a close up, is I think you're getting the theme here, periodically reviewing the replacement priorities and what the priorities are for the, the community and what your pace is by looking at rates. And that's what our next steps is to, to really dig into the detail of our evaluation priorities in the system and looking at rates for how you pay for it. So I, as a glorified math nerd, enjoy this graph because it's showing you that over the course of a product, of this replacement, if you were to do 1% of your system per year, then in the first 20 years, you could take care of all your intermediate priority pipes for replacement. But if you were to double your pace, obviously, you get it done in half the time. So that is a logical thing to say, but if I pay more money, I'm going to replace more. But I think the thing that has, we're trying to convey to the board is that by waiting, the prices are just going to keep going up. Inflation's going to keep going up over time. So.
I do, I want to correct one word. She, she said intermediate, she meant immediate.
Immediate, thank you. Thank you. Immediate.
Two different words. Immediate means, everything in red is what we're saying is likely to fail soon. And in some cases, you're not fixing it for 15, 20 years later. So that's a long time to wait for something that we think is already in bad shape.
And in addition to the issues of inflation, there's very, there's less and less contractors that are available to do this kind of work. So their profit margins are getting larger and they're charging more than ever for the same project that we might have done five years ago. So the bidding environment has become very aggressive, not in our favor, that is. So the, the prices are unpredictable, but they are going up.
Yes. So the question may be for Mr. Pesterzic and Ian Cottington, but I think we need to balance not just inflation by the contractor, but the cost of borrowing. Because we borrow money. And Towne and Long Meadow will get some pretty good rates, but you know, I'll go back to quote a former member of the Select Board, who when, when we were borrowing money at 1.2 or 2.2%, we should have borrowed a bazillion dollars then. But we couldn't because we didn't know what we needed the money for. And so, you know, if rates go, even if we pay four and a half or 5%, and I don't even know if we're down that low, but you know, if, if rates go to 2%, that's a lot more favorable to us and we can undertake a little and, and accept a little bit more inflationary costs. And I, and I'm not a predictor of.
I totally agree with you.
Borrowing money. I don't know what it's going to cost, but.
I think it's really important.
It's a watch out.
And it's one of the reasons why we need to look at the next five and 10-year progressions and pay for the engineering upfront for all those projects. So if all of a sudden the economy shifts and interest rates drop, we need to pounce and get as much done as you can. And that's why we need to have a plan and we need to be aggressive with the preliminary engineering. So we're, we're in a position to capitalize on low rates and also capitalize on federal funding with shovel-ready projects when it comes.
That's, I agree. That's fine. Another thing that we've kind of discussed over periods that, you know, our, our, the amount of debt the town owns changes. And so we had a lot of debt from the high school. And as that sort of drops off, then we're going to have a junior high school. So it's almost like. It's two different things, Tom. This is water and sewer rates. The cost of this doesn't go against the tax bill, luckily. It goes against the residents. Residents have to pay, yeah. But, but it's, but we don't have to worry about Prop. 2 and 1/2 or any of that stuff. This is totally. But, but if we're going to, you know, so. You're right. It's the same pocket that's coming out of it. It might be better to raise it earlier than after the middle school. Because after the middle school, I think it'll be harder for people to get on board to fund something like this because they'll say, well, already up to our ears in debt. So that's, I just think that's another thing that I learned from Paul Pesterzic. Any other questions? Yes?
Yeah. So two things. I think, first of all, thank you for this presentation. I think this is so helpful. This presentation just makes me, I think, believe even more so that we need to do this Route Five project. You look at this, Route Five, the, the main, the water mains are old. It looks like they're likely to be, to break or causes problems, and they're in a very important part of town. And I can only imagine if we're having to repair those mains every so often, you know, which will probably increase in frequency, the headaches that that will cause. And so it just makes me even more, think even more so that we need to take care of the water main there before we redo Route Five. And the second thing is, is Sean, I appreciate you talking about the need to plan and look at this in a holistic manner because this, I think, also makes very clear that in the last 20 years, we didn't do that. And we mortgaged our future to feel good about ourselves at, you know, whatever point. And, and now we're having to pay the price for it. And now we're stuck here, having to make these really difficult decisions that we should not have ever been put in a position to, you know, in the first place. And so, so we don't, so that we are not a select board that kicks this can down the road, just like was done for us. You know, I, I appreciate you making that point, and I wholeheartedly agree.
Thank you.
Dan?
Because my colleague spoke so eloquently about that. I agree. I mean, I think this is one, you know, I've only been on the board for a year and a half now, and beneath has been, I don't know, six months.
A long way.
Yeah. But like, one of the things that we're seeing is, for years, the can has been kicked down the road, and now we're being, we have to address it. We've had water sewer rates that have stayed stagnant for years. And now our pipes are bursting. Our water quality is going downhill. So finally, I think we can look ahead and come up with a water sewer rates that makes sense for the future. Not just for the future of me and my family, but, you know, our, our kids, kids. And we weren't doing that for 20-plus years here. It's, this is one prime example, and tonight it's highlighted.
Mm-hmm. Great. Okay. Well, I guess that's it. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Yep.
And we'll be discussing this more and more.
Yeah, my presentation, so certainly, here. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. And, you know, the good news is these big purchases will go before the legislature, and the legislative body is the town. So they will be voting on this, right? So, because it's, would involve not just raising rates, but, you know, taking loans, right? So, okay. So next is Select Board comments. Does anyone on the board have any comments to make? Mark Gold?
Thanks, I have a couple. I want to start on kind of a personal note. I want to thank all the people in town and friends and whatever who've called me. Many people know that my daughter, one of my daughters-in-law, family and, comes from the area in southern Israel that has been impacted pretty significantly. I've gotten a lot of calls, her family is safe at this point, but I, I appreciate those calls, and I want to thank people for that. Another thing is, a couple of weeks ago, I think Paul Pesterzic sent me an article on, should we think reserves? It's from the Government Finance Operations Accounting Group. And I said, I read through it, I said, this is a great article, Paul, you should send it to the whole Select Board and the finance committee. I think he did. If you haven't gotten a chance to read it, you, we ought to. It's, it's really outstanding in terms of the whole question of reserves and, and, you know, what you do with it versus spending the money on, on things we need to, like the water system. And, and, and I, so I think it's a good, good article. I recommend we put that out. The other thing I want to just comment on, the Massachusetts Division of, I think it's Division of Accounting or whatever it is, sent out their annual analysis or report of taxes in the state. I come here and every year and people scream, Long Meadow has the highest tax rate in the state, the highest tax rate in the state. And I have pointed out annually that, yes, we do have the highest tax rate. Rate is an artifact. We actually had the 47th highest average tax bill. I'm happy to report that for 2022, which is the last year they have it, we are no longer the 47th highest tax rate. Tax, average tax bill in the Commonwealth, we have dropped to 50th. So there are more and more communities who have higher average tax rates than Towne and Long Meadow. That doesn't make our tax rate good, just makes it not the worst enough in the Commonwealth by a, by a long shot. And finally, just that, just coming forward as we're looking at, at our budget for the potentially coming year, Scannick Valley meeting I was at, they started setting their rate, Paul probably knows better, he's on the, you know, he's the accountant for the Scannick Valley Healthcare Consortium. They started setting their rates for 2025. And I, you know, I, again, I praise them to the sky in their, in terms of their ability to hold down rates for the people who have medical insurance under the Towne and Long Meadow. It's primarily our employees, but also our retirees and, and the surrounding communities. It's, it's an interesting organization. We've talked many times over the last year, gee, we should get involved with the, you know, the, the state level and all that kind of, we should be very happy with the Scannick Valley group that we have. They've been able to manage the rates at very, very effective and affordable rates and increases year over year. So I think people should understand that.
Yeah. Well, thanks for bringing us up to date on that. Any other Select Board comments? Okay. Then we will move on and we'll go to the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you. So keeping on the water theme, I've got a little summary here for, about Magnolia Circle. That water line suffered multiple breaks last week, as you all know, and it was, that line itself had been installed in the 1960s and 70s, and it's made of asbestos cement. In 2019, there had been a large house fire that put those lines under significant pressure for a prolonged period of time. And in 2020, DPW made upgrades to the stormwater system and new road surfacing, but no improvements to the water sewer infrastructure were done at that time. And then again, last week, we had multiple breaks on Magnolia Circle and Primrose Drive. The recent hydrant flushing activity likely played a role in those breaks. And as a result, the road has been undermined. DPW is going to perform temporary fixes to the road so it can complete plowing operations this upcoming winter season. However, before a permanent fix to the road can take place, it's recommended that we replace the water main on both Magnolia Circle and Primrose Drive. So DPW will be working on plans for that. The Long Range Plan Draft is in a draft form, and we are seeking public comment. So the Long Range Plan Inventory and Analysis is now open for public comment. And as a reminder, this inventory and analysis is essentially the existing conditions foundation of the Long Range Plan and was developed over the course of the past year's data analysis and engagement with the Long Range Plan Steering Committee, residents, stakeholders, and town staff. You can obtain a copy of the draft on the town website at longmeadowma.gov. We're soliciting public comment on the factual accuracy of the draft. Document is very lengthy, and while we encourage everybody to read through the whole thing, we just welcome comments on as much of it as you can, either the entire document or just specific sections. Comments are due by October 31st, and we ask that everyone please share this as widely as possible so we can get great feedback. I recently attended the International City Managers Association Annual Conference in Austin, Texas. I was fortunate to receive a scholarship from the Mass Municipal Association to attend, to cover, to attend the conference and cover some of the associated travel costs. I spent three long days in engaging, in engaging workshops with peers from around the country and several from around the world. The areas that I focused on were specific to what we're tackling here in Long Meadow, diversity, equity, and inclusion, managing in a multi-generational workforce, employee attraction and retention, and municipal broadband. Another great day-long conference was recent, that I recently attended last week, was co-hosted by the Division of Local Services and the Massachusetts Regional Planning Agency. This was on statewide municipal partnerships. This was just for mass officials, and we all shared ideas and learned from each other on issues impacting all of our communities. And there I focused on climate change and the federal funding opportunities that are available. In this month, in this report tonight, I have the legal expense update. It's covering this first quarter of FY '24, and it shows you the closeout of FY '23. I'm not going to go through all those numbers, but they're here listed if anyone has questions. And I'm happy to announce another grant award. I'm liking this theme. It's almost every, every report, we have a grant award. So the DPW this time was awarded $184,568 in Complete Streets grant funding. This is for construction of a Wolf Swamp Road sidewalk on the south side and pedestrian crossing enhancements on Norway Street. There's more detail on the projects listed here in my report. But these projects were identified and highly ranked during the 2017 Complete Streets prioritization, planning process that the town went through at the time. The design's going to be finalized and put out to bid sometime in the summer of 2024.
This is great.
And that's all I have tonight. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Yes. Mark Gold?
Two comments and two questions. The first comment is, I think people understand that I had, I'd gotten some contacts with people on Magnolia Circle. I think they called me before they called Sean, in fact, when the water main broke. But, but they're extraordinarily complimentary of the DPW in the way that was repaired and the response that, that they got, even though the road apparently was entirely a mess. But I just wanted to comment about that and make sure that people heard that, that they were very complimentary about it. You know, the, the other question I have is the Complete Streets on Wolf Swamp Road. My understanding was the south side was kind of a no-construction site because of the gas, the Tennessee Gas Pipeline. And I, and I assume that you've gone through all that stuff. But we've been, we were told in the past, Tennessee Gas won't let anybody do anything on the south side of Wolf Swamp because they've got, you know, gas pipeline there. So take it for what it's worth. If you've done it, you know already, but if you haven't done it, you, you might want to. The other thing is, with the discussions we've been having about water and water projects and things like that, I would have preferred to have seen the water usage summary in our packet. We didn't get one again this month, and I'm really concerned because the earlier one we had shows that water use this summer is way, way down because it was a very wet summer. And our rates may be up, you know, our, our usage may be down, and we may be falling behind. And I think it's important that we get that data.
I apologize. I had training last week, and I was off for two days, and I, you know, so I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, thanks. Any other comments on the town manager's report? Yes, Jason?
Josh.
Josh.
We'll get there, right? On the legal work, I was wondering if we could just get an update at some point from Egan Flanagan Cohen and from Prince Loben Thai about the status of what's going on. I know that EFC hasn't billed this month or this quarter, so I don't know if there's, where they were in the case.
Yeah.
But we haven't heard from, from Canoff for a while, so hopefully we can get him back in soon.
Great. You read my mind. I've requested Egan Flanagan and Cohen come to your November 6 meeting and executive session for an update on that case. But you're right, I have not heard from Attorney Canoff in a bit, so I will check in with him.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Thank, thank you for those numbers in there. It's nice to, to keep track of them. And they, not shooting through the ceiling, which is good. Any other questions or comments? All right, then we'll go into looking at approving the minutes of September 5th. Mark?
Yeah, I, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of September 5th meeting, subject to, I think there were eight or nine typos and other goofy things that I sent Mike earlier today about that, but subject to those corrections. Nothing substantial in them.
We have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor? All right. So we move on to our, our warrant. We all have a, a draft of the warrant, and so we went through it last time, and we were going to revisit some articles. And so I guess we'll...
This is the new numbers, right?
Yeah, they renumbered these, yeah. So I guess, Michael, oh, the yellow-hyued ones are the select board approved. Thank you. He's already taken care of that. So we've approved Article 1 and 2, 3, 4, and then 5 is a citizen's petition, which we don't approve. They've already gotten approved from the town. And number 6 is also, and 7 was a transfer of funds to the Treasury, the sum of $45,250 for the purpose of enhanced crosswalk safety schools. And so we wanted some additional information. Is that?
Yeah, I, I asked Lynn for a list of the crossings, if that was available. That was more, I just, because I don't know where they all are. So I was wondering if they all weren't, would need the signs on both sides. So that, that was my question on it.
I'm sorry, I must have missed that, on the specific locations. What I have is from DPW from this summer. There are seven, they had 17 locations after they looked at this initial request that came in, and that was not counting the Safe Roots to School Project on Bliss. I don't have an actual, wait, I might, give me one second. Oh, I do. Let's see, Frank Smith Road.
Is there anywhere you can put that up?
Maybe. You're going to really test my tech skills here. I can certainly just send it to Mike, yeah. It's the Excel spreadsheet, but it doesn't look to me like it's, oh, you know what that is? That's just a breakdown. They got very specific for me because of the pricing. So they gave, they broke out the pricing for three different locations. And each location is about $2,000 apiece. So that's what he was showing me in this. So it's not a full, it's not a full list of all the locations. But they looked at this, and then they applied it to 17 locations that they felt this would be applicable. This was the DPW engineering team. This has not been vetted out through what was formerly the Traffic Committee, and it's not been vetted through the new Traffic and Roads Advisory Group because that group has not met yet. So in generating the warrant, what ends up, the way it ends up working is literally the, the week after annual town meeting, it turns into just a brain dump of things that didn't make it on the annual town meeting or stuff that comes up over the summer. So we put this, well, I put this one in here, but then also added to it once we, once I was made aware of the personal protective equipment request for the crossing guards. We didn't have an identified funding source. We had made an ask to the school department. We have not been able to connect with them yet. And knowing that the limited time that we have to fund something outside of annual town meeting, I didn't want to lose this in case we wanted to do it. But I also recognize I was not at your last meeting to have this conversation, so I appreciate you not voting on it that last time. I think you have a couple options tonight. You could, you could move it forward, and we could continue to work on it up until the town meeting. I can get you that full listing of the 17 locations. Or you could refer it out to the Traffic and Roads Advisory Group and have us take a deep dive into the crosswalk locations and develop a policy around it. Because I don't like, generally like to do one-off things. I like to figure out how they're going to be applicable in the other situations that we have. I also want to get a better understanding of the locations to see where they fall in some of those road resurfacing plans, to figure out if there are candidates for the RF, RF, RRFID, the wrap the flashing beacon locations, because that might be a better application. And then in terms of the personal protective equipment for the cross, crossing guards, it's, it's not, I haven't given up on potentially finding funding in this year's budget for it, either partially or totally. And then certainly there'll be a cost that will need to be built in to the FY '25 budget to just continue to maintain that equipment as it breaks or, you know, as it gets worn out. So that's a long, long answer there on, on Article 7, but I know you had some questions on it, and I'm happy to answer any others you have.
Mike, can you just scroll down slowly so we can see the different? Okay, those are just the three on Frank Smith. Okay.
And then they estimated about four hours in labor in each location.
Okay. Well, you know, when you think about crossing the street, you know, you look at a cross, crossing at Williams along Meadow Street, you know, and there's so many eyes there, you know, that there's, anyone's going to see if there's anything going on or, or, you know, if people aren't noticing, you know. And in some of these more obscure crossings, they're probably a lot more dangerous. So, you know, this, this list, you know, looks like those kind of places, you know, so.
I, I don't know. I mean, I see Josh, you know, every once in a while, crossing Williams and Williams get hit, so.
That may be the most dangerous place in the mornings. People are, you can ask Ed there. People are idiots there.
Well, but there's a lot of people.
Fly right over to shout it out. Yeah, but it doesn't matter if they already hit somebody.
A question was brought up earlier about whether evaluating these crosswalks fell under the scope of TRAG. Do we believe that it does fall under the scope of TRAG?
So I believe so because they already are signed. So this would be a change to what is currently there.
I, I would bet most of these are going over roads that are now outside of our approval. They're just under TRAG approval. That being said, I, I don't, we don't necessarily, this came about kind of at the same time we were working on TRAG. I will also, I, I did not appreciate, and Tom, I know you're sitting out there, the rhetoric that we hear at the meeting. I, I just, there's no need for, to talk to us like that and to try to lay any blame on us or on the lines. We are trying to not blow money, and that's the purpose of TRAG. We just, we had a presentation about how to spend money we don't have and to pretend 40 grand is nothing. It's a small part of our budget, but it's not, it's not nothing. That being said, I, I don't mind if this goes on the warrant. I, I think there's a couple of places where it'd be really important for safety-wise. I saw, the signs for 10 grand doesn't make sense to me, but the, I think the vests do. And that's, I think that's more effective and a lot cheaper. But I'm okay with it going on the warrant. I just want people to, at town meetings, to understand that there is a process for this that maybe would be better served. And I also don't want to allocate money that we are, might not, they might get ripped up at when we're doing Route 5. So there are, and without knowing all the crossings, that's, that's my, my big issue here.
Oh, Mark Gold?
Thanks. I, I think Josh has some points that are, that are well-taken. I think the issue is that we don't want to find ourselves without money. And Lynn, you said, you know, you haven't given up on finding money this year, but we don't know that that's a fact. And, and, you know, and yet, I'm not aware to the extent that which this has been reviewed, by not just the DPW, but by the professionals who deal with pedestrian crossing and that kind of thing. And so if, if it was my, if I was czar here, what I would say is go forward to the town meeting, but modify the wording to say, we're authorizing this money, but giving the last word to this TRAG group of professionals to decide, do we spend it in each one of these particular spots? Or there's some we may not do it, or we may hold back, back for six months? Or do we say, look, we don't need the flashing signs right away, but we need the vests? And so to my mind, it's, you know, we're all trying to play professionals when we haven't had the, you know, even the police chief, he said, I like safety, but he hadn't gone through, through all the details. And so maybe the thing is, raise the money and put it aside, and then empower the group to do it so that if, if the decision is in, you know, December or January to do it, we do it in December and January, and we don't then come back and say, yeah, but we didn't find the money in the, in the town budget this year.
It's an interesting suggestion, because that would also allow us the opportunity to give you that listing of streets so that you could look at it and say, this makes sense or this doesn't make sense.
But I think my point, it shouldn't be us.
No, but I think it would then give you an opportunity to look at that, look at this list. But I'd also want to go back and refresh my memory on what the TRAG policy says, because there's some things that group can just do, and there's some things that can't happen without you.
But signage is one thing they can't do.
And, yeah, the flashing beacons maybe would be a public hearing, except we cut out all those, the big byways. And those are not select board at all. So I, that would just be TRAG, I think. So, Mark, I think that's a good idea.
The other thing, just if I can, Josh, and I also tend to stand up at town meeting and say that about the citizen's petition, which by the way, says nothing about the cost. I don't know if that citizen's petition request is a $5,000 request or a $500,000 request, and neither does anybody else, including the petitioner. And so to say, we want to direct that to TRAG may be something to do as well. But that's another argument for late November.
Well, yeah, and so this would be, this citizen petition, Article 6, that's going around.
Everything.
TRAG. But if it got rejected by TRAG, it would go to town meeting anyway as our new policy. And I, I mean, you can always do a petition, so they could do this now. So I, I guess that's a limit of our process. But I, I think that it is, we should respect the process we put in place because we want to do the right thing. We don't want to blow money. We don't want to, God knows, we don't want to spend money that is just going to get ripped up again. So if we could raise the funds and then decide what to do with it, that's a smart idea. If, if Chief Stocks tells me, yeah, these 17 places should have signs, and the money makes sense, which Sean told us it does, then, yeah, that's good. But we've got to do it right.
So, so if I could, Tom, I, in, in the warrant article, it says, you know, raise the sum of 42,000, 250, for the purpose of enhanced crosswalk safety in school zones, I would suggest that we add there and empower the Traffic Advisory Group, whatever their formal name is, to expend this money if they find it appropriate to do so.
I, I don't know that we even need to, well.
Well, I'm just trying to raise the money.
The explanation could, but I don't know that you need to. I, I always look to Paul because he's got way more.
See, my sense, my, my sense, Lynn, though, is if we say, raise this money for this, then you're going to raise the money, and that's what you're going to do. But if you say, and it, you know, to be put aside or to, to empower the, the Traffic Advisory Group to determine when, how, and where to spend this money, to me, it's, it's more definitive, if nothing else.
And it's telling you what to spend the money on and telling who to, who can do it. I think that makes sense.
Any other comments?
No, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's a great idea, Mark. I, I am totally for it. I mean, I was kind of in that middle ground there with this one, and I think that that, that solves it for me.
The issue is, if, I'm concerned that we, we may need this money, and we want it sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I've been in communities where they have the lit crossing signs, and you can't miss those. Those are, I mean, you know, I think if that's the only thing we did, we'd be a lot safer, you know. But they can make up their mind if they have the funding.
Well, frankly, based on Chief Stocks's comments here, it's extraordinarily likely, I won't say a sure thing, but it's extraordinarily likely they'll, they'll, they'll go for it. But I think that even he said, no, it's not one solution fits all. And I think they ought to be taking a look at each of these.
Isn't this just raising 42 grand, and TRAG can do whatever they want with it? Because we don't have, the comment's not part of the.
No, it says, for the purpose of enhanced crosswalk safety in school zones. It says that specifically.
Well, yeah, but that doesn't.
We'll have to clean up the def, the explanation a little bit because sometimes if it's super-specific, we can get kind of backed in.
Wasn't very specific before, Josh. Any more specific?
If the article, the commentary, the explanation isn't really part of the vote, right?
It can, well, no, it's not, but when we go to.
But that's not binding.
Spend the money, we can sometimes hit a snag.
Okay, even though, so that's not binding, but if you're trying, I, I don't remember what I, my first year, this came up on something. I can't remember what it was.
Right. The promises were made in the explanation that weren't kept because they don't need to, right?
Right, yeah, right. It was slightly differently. We need to, that's.
I agree.
Yeah. All right, well, we should run it by. All right, well, we should run it by Attorney Tyler.
Well, if we say, "Taking action relative to the proposed changes that were submitted by the police department."
Well, the fact is, though, Tom and Josh and everybody, and Dan and Haneed, that it's no less definitive now than it was ten minutes ago, that this article. Before, it said, "Raise forty-two thousand, you know, forty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for enhanced crosswalk safety." But it didn't say which crosswalks and what safety, and it doesn't say it now, so I think.
That's because I didn't think of it last week.
Right, so, so it's, if it was good then, it's good now. If it was no good then, now it was no good then.
I, I, yeah. Well, I'm moving accept Article Seven as amended.
Second.
Okay. And Mike, you have the amendment?
Yep.
Okay. Any other further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Okay. So, we've approved eight and nine, ten, eleven, and we come to twelve, which is a transfer of funds, the sum of three hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred from water retained earnings, and the sum of a hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty from sewer retained earnings, and the sum of a hundred and sixty-one, seven fifty for the purposes of purchasing, purchasing two new trucks for the DPW.
So, Tom, the only reason this wasn't approved last time is because it was a hundred percent from raised inappropriate, and now it's fifty percent, twenty-five and twenty-five.
Oh, that's right, yes.
So, with that, with this modification, I, I'll move we accept Article Twelve.
Second.
Second. And again, this is for the dump trucks. All those in favor? Okay. Article thirteen, rules appropriate.
So, yeah, this was, whether that's an annual fee or what.
This number's gonna drop. It's five thousand dollars for the software implementation, the initial purchase, and two thousand dollars for annual maintenance. So, the first year buy-in is seven thousand. So, regardless, it drops, and then the two thousand will be built into the town clerk's budget moving forward.
Okay.
Is this something that other towns are using?
Yes.
Did it change to seven?
Yes.
Seven, right?
Uh, yes, and this, this was, Tim has done his due diligence here, and the Mass Town Clerks Association has an annual conference with vendors. He met with all of them and really vetted this through.
Okay. I think we had asked, if I could, Lynn, what permitting, is this dog permit licenses?
It's dogs, it's business certificates.
It's marriage licenses?
Um, it'll, yeah, it'll track that. It won't actually issue a license. We have a different, there's a state system.
And our process will still be the same for like dog licenses, right?
Yes.
It's just he will have better, Tim will have better capabilities.
Correct.
Okay, so do we have a motion for Article thirteen?
Yeah, I'll move we accept Article thirteen.
Second.
In second, okay. All those in favor? Okay. And so, we have a consent agenda for, you know, Articles fourteen and fifteen and sixteen in a group. There probably no need to discuss that. Article seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, we've approved. Twenty, so we go to twenty-one.
May I make a statement on twenty?
Oh, twenty, yes.
I don't wanna make it in reference to what we said earlier about the cost, that, you know, in six or seven months from now, you'll be putting on your water and sewer commissioners hats. That the, our, our current debt service basically costs, it's about ninety, ninety cents on the rate, or three dollars and seventy-six cents. I've had the financial advisor run some numbers about the impact of the water of this project and how it's gonna influence the rates. It was done on a, a level debt service as opposed to a combination of maybe a level principal or something like that, but it gives us an idea of the impact. This article is gonna raise the rates, just FYI, about forty-nine cents by itself. So, I just wanted to make you aware that there's, you know, people are gonna be into a, potentially a, maybe a ten percent increase in their water rates unless we can mitigate it somehow. I will be working with the financial advisor to work on the, on the debt service schedule. So, we, hopefully, we can lessen the, the initial blow. And then the other thing that I would say is there's always going to be earnings on the proceeds of those first couple of years until we spend them, and, you know, possibly to use those earnings to further lessen the blow in years one and two, so we kind of don't have that large increase going into the water, water rates. Just as enough more happened. I wanted to make you aware, there's a pretty substantial impact in year one, which is FY twenty-five, when the debt service will be becoming due.
Yeah. And I haven't been on the board in a time, or even in town, where we had a project this big. Do we tell people off the bat how much it might raise in, at the town meeting, or is that something that we?
Someone's gonna ask a question.
Well, yeah. Should we put it in our?
Again, there, there's no hard number yet because we, we haven't really gone out to bid. We don't know, you know, we're, we're just using estimates right now, and I haven't begun to manipulate kind of the debt service. We've only used it in one particular fashion. I wanna see if some of the initial debt service or the initial principal that's paid in year one can maybe be pushed out. We do have to follow IRS rules and regulations, and the financial advisor is the expert. You can certainly tell them that we'll, there will be a substantial impact, but to give them an exact number, I wouldn't wanna give them an exact number. Let me put it that way.
I'd rather give them a range, a high range.
Yeah, we, we can give them a range, and like I said, the other thing that I would suggest to you is that because there will be interest earned on the bond proceeds, that potentially that might be able to be built in also to offset some of that large increase right away when you're thinking about this, so.
So, Paul, if I could, Tom, the, the, I'm looking at the water rate structure that you have for current fiscal year, twenty twenty-four, and it has, you know, bonded capital of six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-five, seventy-eight cents on, on the rate, right?
I saw that, Mark, and I think that number is wrong.
Okay.
But the, the number that is right is the, the total budget of the three million, three hundred, three hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Yeah.
The total full budget.
Okay.
So, that, that's what we base, based the rate on. So, you know, I, I think some of it also came about with the, the, the bands that we rolled or had put together on some of the, on some of the other projects that we're doing, whether it's Emerson, Cooley, or the water quality flow that had been approved the year before.
Well, that was gonna be my other point, is that, that, you know, your numbers, you know, not your numbers, your comments presume that the only added, added cost to our water rate will be bonding for this project, when in fact, we already have several other projects.
Actually, the, the, the numbers that I'm using is all inclusive.
Oh, okay, so.
It has the water mains for eight point five million, and the other ones that we, we did a, a year or so ago, the water quality flow enhancements, the Emerson Road water mains.
So, the forty-nine cents that you're.
It's all encompassing.
It is all encompass, okay.
It has those four authorizations in it.
That's still forty-nine cents out of a three dollars and seventy-six cents.
Forty-nine cents out of three dollars and seventy-six, which is your current rate.
Which is, which is more than ten percent, we might, whatnot.
Well, exactly. I'm only using ten percent. I'm hoping, again, working with the financial advisor to shift some of that into, into years outward so we can drop, you know, a little of it or smooth it out a little bit. You know, it, it's even, I mean, the good news is that without this, or, I mean, the timing of it is good because, you know, in the absence of this, your, your debt service would have dropped about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So, the timing of this, it's already absorbed two hundred and sixty thousand dollars of what this is gonna cost. So, to some degree, the timing of it is good, but there's still gonna be a, a good impact to your rates.
Right.
So, I don't wanna be a surprise to the water, sewer commissioners, select board, whatever you wanna call yourself today or in six months from now. It's, don't wanna be a surprise.
I don't surprise anybody. Do we need to update this now, or can you give us a guesstimated range?
Sure, I, I can give you a guesstimated range by the time this is printed, which, you know, finance committee meets tomorrow, and I think the date was towards the end of the week.
Well, we need to do it for Article nineteen as well, right?
Article nineteen, the, the impact is very minimal. This new sewer has a three cent impact. You know, it goes from a dollar ten. The, the current impact is a dollar ten on the rate. It's going to a dollar thirteen. And that's only in year one. Then it goes down to a dollar ten. I could even smooth that out, so there's probably no impact by just pushing off the, the principal a little bit into the outer years.
So, Paul, is that, when we, when we say borrow, obviously nowhere do we say ten-year bond, twenty-year bond, five-year, whatever. We leave that to, to you as a professional. And I assume this is like the, any bond we have in town, we can set it up to some degree so it's not straight-line borrowing kind of thing, right?
Right.
But, but do generally, I believe, water has always been ten-year bonds?
Um, this eight point five, because of the large principal, I did thirty years.
Oh, you did do thirty.
I did do thirty. Now, some of the other ones, you know, the water quality flow, you know, we've, we've gone only like five years because the amount is so small, a hundred thousand dollars. The Emerson Road, I don't have my full spreadsheet, but I'm not quite sure what Emerson Road. Yeah, but it's the number of years that we, the projection was for. I'm almost assuming Emerson Road is probably thirty years. Emerson Road is also thirty years, and Cooley is also thirty years.
And yet, tonight we heard that Magnolia Circle and Primrose is gonna come up, and who knows how much that's gonna cost, and where that's gonna, and I assume that we're gonna tackle that pretty, pretty quickly in the spring town meeting to bond it.
I, I would imagine so, yes.
So, okay. I, I mean, I, like I said before, I, my sense is we've gotta decide what we can afford and not necessarily what we wanna do. And I acknowledge your comments that it's the right thing to do. It is the right thing to do, but only if you can afford it, or if we're willing to impose this on.
Yeah, we can't, we can't afford not to, I guess, in the long run.
I just didn't want you to be surprised, that's all.
Appreciate it, Paul.
Josh, I'd argue that there's a, there is an argument for, we don't do it now. We let, let them refinish the road, and if we need to repair it, we'll repair it when we need it, or we'll schedule it when we can afford it, when interest rates go down. That may not be the, an ideal way to do it, but, you know, if you recall, much of the water piping is going in on the, on the tree belt, not under the road. The under the road part was at a couple of intersections.
We're moving off the road.
Right, so, so, you know, it, it, it is. It's a, it's a tough decision to make, and, you know, we're dealing with, with costs to, to people, and frankly, the, you know, our, our water is, is low cost, but if we're just gonna start adding things up, as we saw tonight from the tie and bond presentation, this eight and a half million dollars is, is nothing because there's another ten point four coming right behind it that they wanna do. And so, if you think eight point four is gonna add ten percent or twelve percent to the cost of water, ten point four will add another ten percent or something to the cost of water.
Yeah.
Can get pretty, are expensive.
But you look at, I mean, the town has to make decisions the same way families have to. I mean, there's some decisions you have to make as a family. You say, "Well, we better purchase this now before our children start college because we're not gonna be, not gonna have much money then. We'll be paying, you know."
But we defer what, even a family defers what they can defer because we can't afford it now. And, and sometimes you say, you know, "I'd like to get a couch, and I know if I wait three years, it'll be more expensive, but I'm gonna wait three years because I can't afford it right now." And, and I'm, I'm giving that argument because I think we need to do what we have to do because that's all we can afford, and we can't do what we wanna do. And I see much of this as something we want to do because of the timeliness. But frankly, if, if the Commonwealth wasn't coming forward and saying, "We're refinishing Route Five," this wouldn't be our highest priority. Our highest priority would be Magnolia Circle and, and Primrose, and probably that ten point four million we heard about tonight, and it wouldn't be this. And so, this is, it's an argument for saying, "This isn't something we must do. It's something we are choosing to do." And like you said, in the family, maybe we put that off and pay the price down the road. I don't know.
It would be my intent, working with Ian, because Ian knows how I felt about, you know, over the years, working with water rates, sewer rates, tax rates, I don't care whichever one you wanna use, that we would elevate to the smallest degree possible over a three- or a four-year period, and then try to have a level off. I think that's the way that we did it. Mark, you may recall.
Right, with the high school.
I think it was with the DPW, and Tommy, you might recall, the DPW and the Council on Aging, that we had that big influx, and, and we, depending on which methodology we chose of financing, we could've had a large increase in year one, and then it could've went like that, or we bumped it up a year, a year, a year, where there were small increases for about four years, and then it started to level off. So, that'd be my intent to, small bumps, or Ian's, my intent to tell Ian to have these small increases over a number of years till you get to a level that it's, it's thereafter, it's going to be level for a number of years, and then drop off so many. So, you don't have a, a large increase to swallow in one year.
Yeah, that sounds good, because the, the diagram they showed, the presentation showed us clearly that if we invest money early, in, in the first four years, you know, it looks like we could make a significant impact on the most critical areas that are gonna cause us problems and cause us a lot of expenses. And so, and they said, "If we delay this, it's gonna cost a lot more." And it's like, you could say, "Okay, I'm not gonna buy the sofa now," but if you know that sofa is gonna be two thousand dollars now or eighteen thousand dollars later, you say, "We're gonna buy the sofa now."
But if your sofa breaks, you don't have to redo the floors, and you don't need a sofa.
Yeah, so, you know, we'll keep discussing it, but at this point, so Article twenty's approved. And so, Paul, you've made comments in regards to this, and is there anything else we need to consider before we move on?
No, I just wanted to make you aware of the rates and any impact on the rates, that's all.
I just, I would like to add that into the narrative, just Paul's range that he can give us.
Right, and I'll, I'll work out a kind of a, a general estimate range of, so that folks are aware.
Yeah, thanks, Paul.
That'll help people, yeah. Okay, good. And then, Opal, OPED funding, we have a hard number here.
That number can be increased by three thousand if the, if the clerk's amount.
Okay.
I take that back because the clerk's amount was raised inappropriate. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Really?
Right, so it, it, there is no change there.
Okay. And was, we were just waiting on this to, for the exact numbers, is that right?
No, I didn't respond. We switched it from.
There was originally two in there. One was for operate.
Operation stabilization.
We took that out completely.
Okay. So, we have a motion to accept Article twenty-one?
I'll move we accept Article twenty-one.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, and then we have a consent agenda two, which versus Articles twenty-two and twenty-three. And we've approved Article twenty-four and twenty-five and twenty-six. And is it midnight yet? No, Article twenty-seven. Article twenty-eight is approved, and we come to twenty-nine, which is dogs on athletic fields. And so, we, it looks like we have some updated wording here that says, "Dogs except for prescribed by Mass General Law, two seven two S, nine eight A, and the American Disabilities Act," which would be the way of describing service animals, and we, the fields on the town long metal, that's what we had, so.
So, I, I worked with Corinne on changing this because it just, it just said service, seeing eye dogs or hearing.
Yeah.
Or service, I'm sorry, service animals are turned not defined anywhere. I, the, the Mass General Law definition is kind of odd, but if you look at, there's documentation that you can figure it out from, it's actually dogs and small, certain small horses can be service animals. So, I don't, I don't expect to see many service animals on the fields, but that's, so that's just making it clear. But as Corinne said, there is a memo. You can't really ask people, so it's, the, it's Jim Layden is actually the person in town who can determine if it's. Jim Layden is actually the person in town who can determine if it's correct. I can't remember what title that is, but.
ADA coordinator.
He's our ADA coordinator, so he can he would be the one who's called if there's a question, but there probably won't be.
If there's an animal on the field.
Right, yeah, and then but he can't ask if they or you can ask if they're a service animal, you can't ask for documentation, you can't ask why, so.
I will accept Article Twenty Nine as modified.
Sorry, I talked so long.
Second, okay. All those in favor? Okay, Article Thirty, authorize the select board to um, look at the aggregate electrical load through community choice. And so we did have a person speak to us a little bit about it in our comments. She didn't show up in our online.
No, I do not see them in there.
Questions, yeah, all right. So, yes.
I think we were mostly waiting to hear, we didn't vote last week because we didn't hear what Lynn said.
Right, we wanted to hear what Lynn said because we didn't know about if there was a feasibility or feasibility, there's a couple of different things about um, it would be the town's responsibility, right?
Yep, so I'm all for exploring this, it's just a matter of process and timing. That's that's where I'm at least comfortable with this at the moment. The vote is just the very first step and then there's all of these other things that have to happen after that. And while we can get a consultant to do it, someone still has to work with that consultant, manage that consultant. And I just want to set expectations on what what would be expected and the timeline after, I'm assuming this passes.
So if we do this, that kicks in responsibilities?
Oh, well, we could choose nothing, we could just sit on it, but I don't think that that's what town meeting expects when they vote on something.
But this doesn't say like we have to do this, we have to spend a hundred grand by within sixty days, something like that.
Right.
But we haven't, we would have to do this to do anything else.
Right, and DPU over the summer opened an investigation into municipal aggregation to try to streamline the process. There's a lot of really great things that they're looking to try to do. A community will wait anywhere from twelve months to Quincy's been in the queue for thirty six months right now. So DPU wants to expedite that so that communities aren't sitting there waiting, but there are some not great things in that investigation that they're considering. Right now, a community can have more than two electrical providers, this would limit you to no more than two. And so MMA has gone on record with comments opposing that. I've asked for a copy of that letter, I don't have it yet to share with you. So this it's just, there's a lot of this that I don't know yet, but I do know that it triggers a process and I just am looking to see who's going to be managing that process.
Mark, hold.
Lynn, I I I can't argue with anything you said. I think my concern is that the DPUC being the DPUC, they're not likely to make changes really quickly and we're going to find ourselves not being able legally do anything until we pass this kind of a a resolution. And if we pass this, then anytime between now and our annual town meeting, we can start moving forward whether consultant or or not. But if we don't pass this, legally, we really can't start moving forward. And so I just see this as as an enabling step that doesn't obligate the town to anything financially, anything in terms of commitment of people or or resources within the town staff and yet clears the way that should we want to move forward, we can sooner rather than later. So it's it's I just see it as an enabler and you're right, if this said you will do it in thirty days or sixty days, I'd I'd fall right back on what resources we have, but this doesn't say that.
If we can have a description that sets expectations, aren't we hiring someone that could do this?
It's not on the horizon anytime soon. We have not had luck filling that position.
Yeah, I mean, I said, you know, I think pretty much what Mark said at the last meeting, that this seems like just a box to check and we should just check it so then we have, uh, you know, the leeway to get started on it when we want to. So, yeah, so, yeah, for that reason, I I'm still in favor of voting for it.
I think I think we just said a description saying, this is the first step, it doesn't guarantee anything, it may take many years.
Well, I think you not in May, it's likely.
It will, yeah.
Um, so I I'm, if the board would be willing to do this, if it passes, assuming it'll pass a town meeting, then November, the meeting after town meeting, November twentieth, I think, and we have this as an agenda topic then to just to talk about whose project this is, whose responsibility is it to find a consultant, bring them in, interview them, talk to some other communities, are we looking for energy and sustainability to do this? Is it me, is it the assistant town manager trying to schedule out work if it ends up being out of my office, it's going to be critical.
You sound like you've got a lot on your plate there.
Yeah.
No, I I think it's important to talk about that because frankly, personally, I, you know, as much as you like to say, oh, let's give it to a committee, you can't. And there's got to be involvement by your staff, your staff somewhere.
And so this will allow residents to choose between, you know, the norm, the supplier we have now and one other supplier.
No, it this what this does, Tom, is right now residents can choose between multiple suppliers.
Okay.
This would add an electrical supplier that the town has vetted and contracted with. And one of the differences is that the rates become more more communicated and hopefully more fixed over a longer period of time. So, you know, you can right now answer one of those letters you get from Constellation Energy or all those other places. But who knows what their agreement is, but this this would be something that, as Lynn said, the town would get involved because it would be a contract that the town would have with some electrical supplier somewhere that said for the next X years, hopefully, town residents who sign up can get their buy their power at, pick a number, sixteen cents a kilowatt hour, whatever that number is, right?
Yeah, essentially like cooperative buying.
So it just adds another option, but it's one that that kind of gets the town's seal of approval with work.
Okay, but the state sets the the bottom rate or the top rate?
The state, the state sets the ever source rate.
Ever source rate.
All these are alternatives to ever source.
Okay.
And ever source rate by law currently must change, must be recalculated every six months, which is part of the issue. Ever sources electric rate goes up and down and up, you know, and and if there's a world crisis, it goes way, way up and if there's, you know, whereas theoretically, we can the town can buy for a longer period of time and smooth it out.
At a fixed rate, okay.
Oh, yeah.
And not have to do the variability.
That's.
Okay, so are we going to put a motion on the table then for Article Thirty?
Yeah, I will accept Article Thirty.
Second.
Okay, no further discussion, all those in favor? All right, that is.
Just to clarify on that.
The end of the room.
Were you working on the description?
That was a mast, same thing.
All right.
I'm glad to work on a description in the next couple of days. Want that to come back here just to?
So description, I mean, we're going to look for it to say something along the lines of this is just to initiate the process that will be discussed at a subsequent.
I like your phrasing, this checks a box.
Yeah.
This checks the first box in a multi-box process of allowing the town to negotiate electric rates, but it will be a long period of time before that we get anyone, that's all. And it obligate and what else is it, and it obligates nobody in town to participate. I think it's important to have those components to it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good, all right.
I'll get you something.
So if this is the warrant, I guess we could have a motion to close the warrant, right? We've approved all the articles.
Yeah, I will close the warrant for the uh, November seventh special town meeting.
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor? Okay, we have a sheet I'm passing if we all need to sign this, so that'll be in order. Thank you, Paul, for helping us through that process and Lynn. And so now we look at the LT LCTV operating agreement and um, hopefully we'll be able to discuss it without getting taken off the air. But I know this has been a long process and um, so we, I assume it's on the agenda because we made progress to the point that we're ready to move forward, yes?
No, it's on the agenda because we have a six month agreement, but it's not the final agreement.
I will speak to that. So it's been a very frustrating process, to put it very mildly. We have made a lot of progress. This has been predated me being on the board. It's ate up a lot of mine and Lynn's time and town's money, unless much less so when Attorney Tellman stepped in thankfully. So as you can see, we're approving an interim agreement that is good for six months and I I don't know if you were curious why we're doing interim agreement, it's because LCTV threatened to sue us, sue the town and and if to shut down or threatened to sue the town because they were running out of money, because they hadn't been getting paid because we couldn't pay without an interim agreement. While I think the lawsuit would not have had any grounds, we wanted to make sure that the station would continue to run and make sure everyone got paid. So attorneys with Lynn and I piping in occasionally arrived at this interim agreement. I won't go into details, but I think that most of the fundamental disagreements have been resolved and then so we were because it's an interim agreement, we wanted to make sure it covered everything, it really covers most things. So there's been great progress in the last few months with our Attorney Tellman, Attorney Sacco hashing out the last few items. So while this is an interim agreement, I'm confident it will lead to a full one. If it does not, I think we have a very hard decision to make. Or maybe not hard because it's it shouldn't, we shouldn't be here talking about this this much. I want to reiterate, I'm not saying this because they're watching, LT LCTV has fantastic employees, work very hard, we're grateful for them. From the beginning, my two goals have always been that we will have a TV station or a technology station, if a TV goes away, that will allow us to everyone in town to watch town meetings one way or the other. My other worry and goal was that the LCTV employees would not have to worry about a paycheck and that's why we did interim payments, we are were spent a lot of time doing a six month agreement. And I I hope by signing this agreement, it will lead to a full agreement and that those two goals have been met for the foreseeable future. So I I would recommend that we sign this, I know Attorney Tellman does and I I hope Lynn does as well, but this has been a long process and I but we're in a good place. So I hope we can sign this and move on.
All right, Josh, thank you again for all your work on this. I know you probably learned more about cable TV than you probably ever wanted to really know.
That's right.
But that's a very valuable thing and and it may turn out, I I think of progressive conflicts like, you know, the the Salt Talks where they said, okay, we want to limit, you know, nuclear weapons and they said, well, we have one meeting, so two, three, four, it may have taken a while, we may have several of these six month agreements.
This process is worse than that, actually.
It's worse than that.
High stakes.
Well, we may, well, you know, we I I would support this and and maybe we will need another six month after this and it'll take a while.
I hope we don't get there. We should be getting, we should do it, fill in the rest of the ten year term that coincides with the Comcast agreement.
Oh, that's the goal, yes.
Yes, if we were going to do it, I would never vote for another six year, six month agreement.
Okay.
This this would be it, I we shouldn't even be doing this, but I don't, I think in the interest of going forward, that's why I'm, I think we should vote for it. I would never recommend we vote, we do it again because that's a bad position for us to be in.
Okay, so this is sort of like the beginning of, you know, of a process to get a ten year contract, but we we, everyone needs to get paid, so we can understand that. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, so.
Thank you to Lynn and Attorney Tellman for a lot of hard work on this.
All right, well, so um, so I'll make a motion that we accept this interim agreement for town Long Meadow and the public access cable television and it is a six month agreement.
Yeah, I'll second that and just note that Lynn will sign it, we're not signing it, we're authorizing her to sign it.
Okay. Is that all fine folks?
Do you want that part of the motion?
There's no further discussion?
Authorize Lynn to sign the cap.
Okay, all right, all those in favor? All right, great. And now we have new business, the Long Meadow Country Club has put in an application for a liquor license amendment as a changer hours, the amendment is a change of hours of the license to nine AM to eleven PM every day, right? Is that and alcohol beverages cannot sold before ten o'clock on Sundays. So it's, okay, so all, so six days a week, but not on Sundays. Is there anyone from the Long Meadow Country Club to?
Yeah, they're on Zoom and I'm moving them in now.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Katie Brasso, I'm the clubhouse manager at Long Meadow Country Club.
Okay, so do you want to speak to the motion or, you know, to this request first? Have any comments?
Yeah, and we are seeking to start our liquor license at nine AM. We are currently open for breakfast only on the weekends, coffee, donuts, bagels, orange juice. We have had some people who are looking to order alcoholic drinks when we are open on weekends early, so we are just looking to cover all of our bases and just ensure that we're, you know, following all of the rules and the guidelines and doing things properly as well as for any other events that we do on the weekends, bridal showers, baby showers, any large vault tournaments that we do, just looking to cover all of our bases on that.
Okay, so so you're saying the origin of this is that several members have asked for this, this wasn't like a vote of the whole membership of the country club, right?
No, it was not.
Okay, so how many people are we talking about that that think this is a good idea?
Um, you know, we get a good handful on the weekends, it's really only on Saturdays and Sundays, it's not during the week. I'm not sure if it, I don't think it's an option to do different hours on the weekends, Sundays, during the day, during the week, I'm sorry. But it's not our entire membership or even a quarter of our membership by any means.
Okay, so because it's a, it's a, I feel it's a big decision for the town because other country clubs are going to want the same thing and and other folks in in the so so we're talking about twelve people are behind this and do you think that, you know, I don't know, you know, when I look at this, you're going to increase your your hours some days, so Monday through Friday, Monday through Saturday, you'll be offering drinks for fourteen and a half hours a day, right? Which is a pretty good stretch and so this would allow folks during weekdays to come in at nine o'clock and this would be for working adults, parents of children, retired adults. Do you know who who's going to be drinking, is it open to everybody, right?
Correct, but Monday through Saturday, we do not open until eleven o'clock. It's only, my main concern is our Saturday service in the morning, again, that breakfast crowd that we have come in, we're, you know, coming in grabbing late breakfast and going out to play around.
But that's not what your request is, right? Mark, hold.
Yeah, Katie, I just, I think we need to clarify something because you you commented that, well, we can't change it for just a couple of days and 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 I'm not sure that's the case and and I don't know. You can't, you can't.
Absolutely.
You absolutely can't.
Because I had the impression that we weren't allowed to do it for certain days.
So that that may change things a little bit here, obviously, and and for me at least, the the concern is is less Long Meadow Country Club and more every other establishment in the town of Long Meadow who, you know, we currently have pretty well set hours of eleven AM liquor start in town and, you know, if if we change one, we're going to, in my opinion, likely to get requests from many others. from many others to change those as well. And that's concerning. On the other hand, you know, if there's one day that you're interested in, I think that is very different from a seven-day-a-week kind of thing. I understand that brunch may be served on a Sunday or something like that. Frankly, even if some of the other restaurants in town said, we'd like to be able to serve Bloody Marys with lunch or something like that, you know, or with brunch starting at, you know, earlier in the morning. So I think it's important that we, we understand what you're requesting. And if in fact, you don't care about Monday through Friday, maybe we take that off the table so that it makes it more palatable for those of us who are concerned about 18 other establishments in town.
And if, you know, if that's the case, then we are happy to do just a Saturday earlier service. Because I'm not concerned about Monday through Friday.
And Kaylin, what time do you usually start serving alcohol on Saturdays? Is it 10 or 11?
11.
11, okay.
11, so...
And she indicated that they open Monday through Friday at 11 as well.
Yeah. Well, this is, you know, it's a big relief to me that you'd be willing to, to not serve alcohol starting at 9:00 on weekdays, because I think it does affect people in our town in a big way. And, and I think it's just hard for, we talked about trying to reduce substance abuse amongst kids. And, you know, when kids know that their parents are having breakfast at the club and having, you know, mixed drinks at 9:00 while they're at school, it's just not a good kind of thing. We, we look at the issue of alcohol, and we've had a steady increase in alcohol use since We have 7.9 billion gallons in the U.S. that's used every year. And it's up 1 billion from the year before. So it was, you know, 6.9, now it's 7.9. And that was taken in 1920, or 2022. In Massachusetts, people drank about 2.6 gallons per capita. And, you know, we, we look at allowing people to have access to more alcohol is a difficult thing. And we look at, in the past, you know, one of the things we did to reduce alcohol access is when we moved, when the drinking age was lowered to 18, you know, it seemed like a good idea. But the legislatures decided to move it back up to 21 because they found it was causing difficulty. And so I kind of feel the same way about this. You know, having people drink during weekdays at 9:00 just gives people access to alcohol in a way that is not going to be productive. So, you know, if you're willing to make the change to it, I guess I would be in support of this change.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yes.
Tom, I just want to, you know, I know that this is a passion of yours and I think it's laudable. I, to me, and I think that something that Paul said today really, I thought spoke to this. You're, if it, it's a public health issue, the way you're framing this?
Yes.
I think that warrants a public health response, if that's what you want. I don't think that denying, if other, if other restaurants do ask us to do this, I don't think that's the way to, to deny individual applications, I think is the best way to do it. If, if it was something that people in town thought was important to limit liquor consumption before 11 or being able to purchase it, I think then you have a bylaw. You propose a bylaw, you let people vote. But to do it, and then that can be the rule in town. But to have, to reject businesses that are trying to do it, I think is not fair without a, even a policy in mind. And I, taking it off the table during the week, I think that that probably is a good business decision anyway. But that's just what I think. If we're talking about public health issue, I think that demands a public health solution, not, and not let the whole town vote on it, rather than the five of us saying, well, we don't think this, this is good for public, for the public good, so you can't do it. In fact, that might even, we, if we did deny it, if it was appealed, it may, we may have to make a finding that it's not to the public good. I think it's a question for Attorney Tellman. I know I'm talking, I'm speaking generalities.
All right, no.
Because if we're talking about just Saturday and an hour on Sunday.
Right.
I think we all, that's not a big deal. But I, if this does change the way businesses act in town, I think it warrants a bigger conversation. That's all I'm saying.
And I would say the same thing. I would say that it should be a bigger conversation at the Long Meadow Country Club. You know, it doesn't sound like it was even a board decision. It wasn't a board, a membership decision. And so, you know, so you're right. For us, I think it would be the best thing would be to put this in front of the town. I did bring it up at the Council of Aging, and the board there voted that we should not increase the hours on a daily basis to have people drinking at 9:00.
The board president voted on the application. The board president signed the applications, right?
Right. Yeah, we, we're the ones who, yeah, we have to sign it. We have to live with our decisions. And, you know, where's, I guess you get in gray area between approving something this and is this a board of health issue or is this a select board issue? But, you know, I think that, you know, we have to vote with our conscience anyways. You know that, yeah. Mark Gold?
Yeah. Josh, I appreciate your comments. I think they're pretty much on the money. For me, my, my concern here is, I'm going to take something beside public health, and that's kind of the quality of life generality. And I don't know where this actually falls within there. But, you know, I absolutely believe that if we approve this, we will get requests from other, other restaurants. And I'm trying to think what other restaurants may be open on the morning on a Saturday or Sunday, whether it's Postos or Max's or The Meeting House, or I don't even know what, I doubt some of them, you know, some other places are. But as we move forward with this, I think we ought to consider what a policy would look like. For example, do we say, yes, we can open an hour or two hours earlier for liquor sales from 11:00 AM till 9:00 AM or 10:00 AM on just Saturday, as Long Meadow Country Club has asked? On both Saturday and Sunday? Or just one day a weekend, either Saturday or Sunday at one of the, you know, at, as requested? And so that when the next request comes in, it will be much more, I won't say easier, but it'll be more consistent for us to be working against a policy that are, not a written policy, you know, a concept that we've established. Instead of saying, everybody gets a one-off, because when you do that, the first thing you're going to do is have somebody say, yeah, but this is what you did for somebody else, and, and I want something else. So from my perspective, I actually think it'd be fine to approve, you know, a couple of hours early on one day a weekend. The question, certainly for Long Meadow Country Club, the question is, are we going to do that for both days of both weekends for other commercial restaurants? Are we going to say one day a weekend, and we can say one hour, two hours? And I think as we go through this process, we ought to make that decision. So therefore, we have guidelines that until we choose to change them, those will be our guidelines.
Yes, right.
Josh, I want to thank you too for those comments. Public health crisis deserves a public health response. And so, like Mark said, I think you're on the money. So thank you for, for putting it eloquently. And then, Mark, I think, you know, at the last meeting, you, you mentioned that businesses in the past have come and made similar asks. And so I think you're absolutely right that we need to create a policy, because I don't want this to look like we are, you know, favoring one, you know, business over others when others have asked us in the past for this and they've been denied. And so I think it's smart that we should talk about policy. And we can even talk about, you know, whether we differentiate between private clubs and restaurants and determining these hours. But that's a, I think that's a, that's something that we need to do.
Because you know Frank Coni will be here next week.
Right, yeah. And Twin Hills or, and, and kind of, you know, going through the restaurants in my head, I don't think that any of the restaurants are open for breakfast. I know the kitchen used to be, but I think now Thirsty Dog is not.
And they were the one who asked.
Okay.
Yeah, they were the ones that said that.
Yeah, Thirsty Dog does not serve breakfast now. So I don't know if it's an immediate problem. We don't know if Lola's is going to ask for this or one of the new restaurants, but, but it's smart to have a policy in place.
Yeah. Well, as the number of drinkers in town increase, the number of requests for morning drinking will be before us. Because, you know, if you offer a brunch and no one shows up, what's the problem?
It's not just the drinkers who live in Long Meadow Town. There are going to be people from out of town come in here, they use the restaurants and...
Right. If they know in their town they can't, they will come here. And the more people that come here, the more requests we'll get. Yes, that's true.
But Kaylin, thank you for joining us tonight. I think this was really helpful for you to be here and to answer questions and to clarify, you know, exactly what you guys were asking for.
Yeah, can we clarify something?
Are we able to include Sundays in that? Or is Saturday just kind of going to be the decision for right now?
The application that's in front of us appears to say all days, because it just says, looking to change hours and have license run from 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM. So the application didn't even say just Saturdays.
Well, no, she, she thought she had to request the same hours every day. So that, right, Kaylin?
Yeah.
Right, yeah. I wasn't aware that we were, we were able to change, you know, how specific hours are served.
We can reject it.
I thought it was just a general, you know, liquor license, you know, this is the same time for every day of the week. So that was my, it was my fault, and I apologize.
No, no, that's okay. We, we can reject it and say, no, we are not allowing you, or you can amend it now, I guess. But it's, I think it's better for us to reject it.
Really?
Monday through Friday. But I, and I think it can't be until 10:00 AM on Sunday. Is that right, Lynn?
Is that the state law?
I believe so, yeah.
I think it's the state law. I know that's, that's Packers Storm law. I think that's also the restaurant law.
I don't, I don't know.
Well, that's why, and the agenda says 10:00 AM. So Mike must be on top of that.
Yes, I would defer to whatever.
Mike, it's 10:00 AM on Sundays for restaurants, right? That's the earliest you can serve alcohol?
Correct. And, and to sell.
Yeah, Packers Storm's.
So are you seeking to expand your Sunday hours to begin at 10:00 AM?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So Saturday, we would do 9:00 AM, and then Sunday, we could do 10.
All right. So we probably have to have something in writing, correct?
I think we can do it on the fly. I think we can reject the application, or we can accept the application for 9:00 to 11:00 AM on, or 9:00 to 11:00 PM on Saturdays and 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM on Sundays and deny it as to the rest. But I'm, I've never had this happen before, when I'm in front of a board. But I, I think that that's what we could do.
Is that how they, you're open on Sundays, 11:00 PM?
No, we close by 7:30 on Sundays.
Okay.
But again, Veneeth, if we're doing this, we gotta, we ought to do it for the Max's Burgers and the Meeting Houses and Postos that are open late Sunday nights, right?
Yeah, right.
All right. So 11:00 to 11:00 is the standard that they cannot be barred for, from selling? That's like the...
Oh, gotcha.
11:00 to 11:00 is the standard.
So whatever our decision is, it's still going to, it's going to run to the ABCC to get their sign off, to make sure that it's correct. So I wonder, actually, maybe we should get an amended application at those hours, so we could approve it. And then with the contingent on getting an updated application, adding those three hours, and then that will go to ABCC. And then when it gets approved, we would issue a new license and only change those two days.
Okay, that sounds, so then we would need to take a vote to not accept this?
So, well, I'll move that we, we accept the application for amendment of hours from 9:00 AM to 11, for Long Meadow Country Club, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM on Saturday and 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM on Sundays. And that contingent on a updated application.
Second.
Okay.
And all you're seeking on the update application is taking out the Monday through the full week?
Well, I think changing the license, change hours.
Yep.
And then have those specific hours.
Perfect, yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Opposed? No, still. I thought I would, I just couldn't do it. All right. Well, thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Next, we have a street closure application. First Church of Christians, First Church of Christ requests to close Long Meadow Street, East of the Green, between Colton Place and Williams Street for the trunk-or-treat event on Sunday, October 29th, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. Greenacre Avenue, street closure. Request to close Greenacre Avenue from Long Meadow Street to Laurel Street between 5:00 to 9:00 on Tuesday, October 31st, for Halloween. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? One-day liquor license application, LACCf, has applied for two one-day liquor licenses for events to be held in the adult center on November 1st and November 30th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to approve these applications? So moved.
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor? Opposed? All right. And the, we have a resolution condemning the attacks on Israel. I know that we've all been watching the news and are just traumatized by everything that's going on. And so Dan brought it to my attention that we should probably do some sort of a motion. Actually, if you don't mind, why don't we, could we just take a moment of silence for, you know, like maybe just 30 seconds? I know it's a long time on TV land, but let's do that for all those folks who are suffering. Okay, thank you, everyone. So Dan, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I actually brought a copy for everyone, if you'd like to take a look at it. So, all right, sorry, it's really difficult for me to even talk right now, just thinking of the horrific acts that happened, you know, on October 7th. And I think we've, we've all seen the films, we've, we've seen the news, and it's heart-wrenching. I know a couple of us, myself, Veneeth, Mark Gold, we attended, last week, we, we went to Temple of Ethel and attended an event for the public. A lot of Long Meadow residents, our Jewish friends, were in attendance. Mark spoke of his daughter-in-law earlier, and just unimaginable, imagined events that had occurred. And it's really, it's just difficult to see. And I personally have had some trouble, you know, even sleeping at night, thinking about the hostages and all of the families affected. I personally, I have a friend who's fighting in the IDF from Long Meadow. And I think about him and his family. And, I'm sorry. And I thought this was an opportunity for not only myself, but the select board to stand in solidarity with, with our, with, with Israel and our, our friends and allies right here in Long Meadow. We have a huge Jewish population. Many people have been affected by this. And so anyways, I want to read a resolution that, that I wanted to bring forward to all of you tonight. Whereas just before dawn on Saturday, October 7th, 2023, when Israelis were finishing the seventh... when Israelis were finishing the seventh day-long Jewish festival of Sukkot, Hamas terrorists brutally attacked the innocent civilians of Israel, killed hundreds of people, including thirty Americans, and took several hostages, creating unrest, uh, in the entire region. And whereas Israel has the right to defend their citizens against the Hamas terrorist attacks. And whereas the town of Long Meadow grieves for thousands of innocent civilians who have been killed and held hostage. And now therefore be it resolved that the Long Meadow Select Board does hereby condemn the Hamas terrorist attacks on Israel and any violence towards innocent civilians in Israel and the region. And be it further resolved that the Long Meadow Select Board is committed to ensuring the safety of all of its residents and continue to stand against hate, antisemitism, uh, and terrorism. Uh, I thank you all for, uh, listening and I hope you support this resolution.
Okay, well, all put together, um, I like the wording. Anyone have any comments on it or Mark?
Uh, Dan, thank you for putting this together. I think it's great. You know, I, I, I just don't know where to start. And, and part of the problem is, you know, not that this is put together and not that, you know, condemning violence toward innocent civilians isn't something we should be doing. But I guess I'm concerned about the, the precedent we set in the town of Long Meadow of taking international stance. You know, I don't recall us having a resolution against Russia when they invaded Ukraine and we probably should have. We haven't had, you know, resolutions in, in Cambodia when we should have, with, with what went on there and other acts of terrorism and genocide and, and, and the like. And, and I agree with this. I agree with this a hundred percent, but I'm not sure I'm gonna agree with the next one. And I'm concerned about that because if we accept this, I guess the analogy I'll give you is putting up the flags. Remember, we talked and we had a whole situation of, so we ask you to put up a flag. We, somebody came along and said we should be putting up a flag in support of Israel. We might say yes, but we realize that that's a terrible precedent to set because then you can't say no to a flag. And personally, I support this. I think it's a great, a, a great statement and I've demonstrated the support, my feelings every day for the last, you know, nine days since, since the attack happened. And like I said, I've got family involved and I, my work every day is involved with this. I just wonder if this is the right place and the right time for us to express our personal opinions. You know, if it's the sense of the board to do this, you know, I agree with it. I just think, you know, as one of the Jewish members of the community, uh, you know, people need to hear that, that, that it, it's a great, it's great to do. We, somebody needs to say something, but whether the Long Meadow Select Board and the town of Long Meadow is the place, right place to do this, I just don't know. And I would feel badly if I didn't say that. So that, that's, that's the point of my comments.
Yeah. Josh, yeah, I, I, Dan, as your friend, I hate to say this because I feel, I, I, I feel for you. And I, I know you're very emotional and I appreciate that. Just, to me, we're not a political arm. We make policy for Long Meadow. I feel very uncomfortable voting on a foreign policy stance. Uh, and, and I also thought of the flags with Mark. And does this represent, and a lot of people in town? I, I think it does. Have we done a lot of things, not recognized acts that represent a lot of people in town? Yes, and it's, um, but I, I, to me, there's a reason for that. We're not, we represent, we were elected to set Long Meadow policy. And this isn't Long Meadow policy to me. I, to me, the appropriate act is one we already did. And Tom, I really thank you for doing that. Um, I was at the U S Men's National Team game on Saturday and Olin was there too. And there was thirty-eight thousand people there and they did a, a moment of silence. It was a minute long and it was one of the most powerful things I've ever seen. And that to me is we are mourning the horrific acts and the innocent lives lost. And to me, that's, that's a moment of silence. And we did that and I'm glad we did that. And it was, if, if somebody was watching on TV, it's strange to watch for, when people are talking and all of a sudden it's silent. And it was like that at the soccer match and it was, um, I, I, I think that that's the appropriate act. I feel very uncomfortable voting on this. And I, I will abstain, um, because I don't think it's our, it's our place. We don't set foreign policy, we don't control an army, we don't send money abroad. We're, we're focused in and I, I just think we should stay that way. And I, I, I don't think that that is how politicians should be, but I don't think of us as politicians. I think of us as public servants. And that's, that's, that's my feeling and it's nothing against anybody's feelings. I'm not trying to undercut anybody's feelings, but that's how, that's my feeling.
Great.
Yeah, no, um, no, I, I want to start off by just thanking Dan for sharing those words, those, you know, um, very moving. It's really important that you, that you said that. Um, and also for Mark, uh, for, you know, what you've said and then what you said earlier as well. Like you said, it's important to be saying these things. You know, I also, I don't know about the wisdom of us delving into foreign policy or foreign affairs. Uh, but I think that, you know, it's important for us as leaders in the community, um, to support our community, um, in a time of need. And so, and as Dan said, that, you know, we, me and Dan and Mark were at Ethel last week and we, you know, it was a moving service and you could really see the power of community and of people being there for each other. You know, Congressman Neal was there, Mayor Sarno came, um, and that was important. And, you know, as our Jewish community and others grieve and stare down the emotional trauma and the path to healing that will span generations, it's important for us to stand in solidarity with them, um, and also to be here to bear witness. And I think that, you know, I, I completely acknowledge and understand, you know, what Josh and Mark have said, but I, I think it's really important for us to show the community, people in our community who are hurting right now, that we are with them and that we are standing with them. So, um, you know, so I, I would be in support of voting for this resolution.
Okay, and, um, well, I, you know, I, I think that if, I don't know what it was like on the board during nine eleven, but I would imagine if there was something like this that came up, people would all support it. And, um, you know, I, I'll, I'll support this, I'll support this. So, um, do we have a motion on the floor?
Is it, I, so I move to adopt this resolution as, I, I guess I just, I moved to adopt this resolution, uh, concerning the, um, select board support. All right, I guess.
It's a resolution condemning attacks in Israel.
Sure.
That one.
Yeah, that one.
Resolution condemning attacks in Israel. Um, I will second it. Any other further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Opposed? Stained? All right. And that brings us to the end. I know we have some, um, oh, no correspondences, okay. That means things are going well for us.
Well, it doesn't include what came into that.
I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, for a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, good night, we'll see you in two weeks.